Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's study session for January 10th, 2023. I'd like to, first of all, call the meeting to order and ask that everybody mute your cell phones or other electronic devices, and I'll ask our village manager to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Kreip?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Swerk?
Here.
Trustee Dahlman?
Here.
President Rins? Here. Okay. Item two is public comment. Now, this part of public comment is intended for anybody who is here for an issue other than our discussion on the lakefront tonight. So if you're here to talk about stop signs, or hot dog stands, or things of that nature, you're welcome to come up to the podium and share your thoughts with us. Otherwise, I ask that if you wish to participate in the conversation on the issues we're studying this evening, that that'll be later in the evening. So would anybody like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment and move forward. Okay. I have some prepared comments, so we can kind of set the stage for everybody. Before I get started, I would like to set the stage and manage expectations for this evening's meeting. It is important that everybody in the room understand that the council's primary objective for this evening is to become better educated on the jurisdictional reach of various governmental entities, and better understand what potential oversight is available to the village. I need to make it clear that we are not here to discuss specific projects, including those of the Park District or the Ishpias. We are here to listen and learn, so we can think strategically and share ideas. I know that there are people in the community that want us to respond to the perceived urgency of this moment. Council is keenly aware of these concerns, but given the complicated matrix of governmental stakeholders, we need to be sure we are on solid and informed ground before we begin to deliberate on specific actions. Look, our community is blessed with many well-educated and thoughtful residents who are willing to apply their intellect to better our community. Several have spent an amazing amount of time reading, researching, and investigating many issues surrounding lakefront regulation, and as a result, many really good questions have been raised. Tonight is about seeking some answers to those questions from practitioners and other professionals who deal with these issues day in and day out. Any attorney in the room would probably agree that there's a big difference between the written word and the variety of interpretation of those words. That's what case law is all about, and precedence. Just because I can read and understand the law doesn't mean I'm qualified to speak authoritatively on the practical application in the real world, and tonight's subject is no different. It doesn't mean we don't have opinions, it just means we're looking for the most informed opinions we can get from professionals who work in this arena day in, day out. Tonight isn't about rock walls, or pipes, or boat ramps, or dog beaches. It's about jurisdiction and a potential shift in the village's appetite to assume a more active role in shaping the future of the lakefront. This community has generally taken a very hands-off approach to legislating private property rights. Even though we may not like what our neighbors may choose to do, we have been accepting of most, recognizing the importance of our residents' personal property rights. For the last 30 years, and I've been watching it for that long now, I hate to admit, despite quite a bit of public dialogue, we continue to let outside profiteers make their living tearing down serviceable buildings and replacing them with new structures that maximize physical size and profit. Despite the negative impact to stakeholders directly affected by these activities, not one village council has been willing to take up the issue. When you strip it down to its bare bones, no one has been willing to do anything that might impair the potential returns to a resident homeowner. Less house, or a better-designed house, mean less money from the developer to pay for the land. That's just how it works here. Now, we are dealing with some of the most valuable and some of the most desirable real estate in the Chicago area. If council decides it wishes to move forward with imposing restrictions and potential impairments to these most treasured properties, it should be done through a vigorous discussion with those affected, both owners as well as the public at large. We need to be well-informed and deliberate in our actions, and we owe that to all we serve, particularly us here at the table. As I said earlier, this isn't about the project du jour. It is about thoughtful consideration of the issues raised by concerned residents, developing a vision for the future of our lakefront, and making sure we don't impair the property values and fundamental property rights of those fortunate enough to own a little piece of heaven in our community. With that in mind, please help us achieve our goals as a council. We want to hear from everyone on how much authority we should claim and exercise, and that's the subject at hand. To that end, please understand that I will not entertain commentary this evening on projects. We aren't here tonight to talk about bad deals, rocks, access, dogs, views, and the like, or debate issues of doctrine, state programs, white papers, or the law. We are here to figure out whether we, as a council or a community, wish to increase the reach of local government. If so decided, we need to do the hard work to ensure the results are credible and fair. If we are going to do this right, it will take time. Okay, so, just so we understand that part, now we can go on and talk about the order of presentation. What we're going to do is bring up a series of people who have done a lot of research and who work in these areas frequently. The way it's going to work is we'll have a presenter, and then there'll be council questions for each presenter. Once all of the presenters, of which there are one, two, three, four, five, we will then go to public comment and hear from all of those who wish to share their ideas on jurisdictional aspects of what we're discussing this evening. And once we get to that, we'll bring it back up to council and potentially, you know, talk about potential next steps, if we have an appetite for that or not. And we'll get it all done in 45 minutes. I wish. So, to kick things off, I would like to first bring up somebody who I've had the honor of working with on our stormwater project over a couple of years, I guess, right, Soren? This is Senior Project Manager Soren Hall from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Take it away, Soren.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight. You know, we value our local partners, and it's really good to have an opportunity to come and speak with our local partners that have a better understanding of, you know, how our regulations, you know, tie in with the local regulations. And so, it's great to hear that, you know, the village is considering taking a more active role, you know, just because a lot of times there are limitations on what we can do or what our agency mission is. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that tonight, a little bit about what we do and what it is that we don't do, and I think that'll give a better understanding of, you know, how we make our permit decisions and the things that we consider. So, my name is Soren Hall, Senior Project Manager. I've been working on Lake Michigan projects for about nine years. I don't work on a lot of them these days, but I'm still kind of active in overseeing and training some of the newer staff that are working on these projects. So I've kind of taken it from low lake levels to high lake levels and back down to average again, so seen a lot over that time and seen how dynamic, you know, the lakefront is. And certainly an interesting time when those lake levels were high, and I'll touch on that in the presentation, and that affected a little bit about how, you know, we do our permitting as well, so that we could kind of speed up our process. So, with that said, here's a little overview of some of the things I'm going to be talking about tonight. Talk briefly about the history of lake levels and various types of shoreline protection measures. I'll get into what our statutory authorities are and our permitting process, and how that ties into public interest reviews. I will touch on our Lake Michigan RGP, which was developed a couple of years ago to help streamline permitting of these types of projects. And then I'll finish up with a discussion of our jurisdictional line, which is our ordinary high watermark. So this dictates where we have authority to regulate and where we don't. So, as I alluded to, you know, you can see this long record of lake levels that's tracked by the Army Corps of Engineers out of the Detroit District. It was interesting, around the time that I started doing Lake Michigan permitting, we were at the all-time low, and I listened to a presentation from the folks that do the modeling and things like that for the forecasts, and they were talking about how low those lake levels were, and it would take years for them to get, you know, back to anything normal. And then all of a sudden, there they were, you know? So it was quite a drastic change there over a very short period of time. So this information is available online, so I have a web address there, and they do the forecasts, as well as, you know, logging the history of the lake levels. So, you know, there's a variety of different types of shoreline protections that you'll see along the lake, and they've evolved a bit over time. You know, initially, when shoreline protection began, a lot of what you saw was a series of steel groins. You know, that was the most common form of shoreline protection. So the groynes extend perpendicular from the shoreline, and for a long time, that was the primary form of protection. Revetments were also used. At times, revetments are parallel to the shoreline and tend to hug the toe of the bluff or the edge of the shoreline. They can be constructed of stone as bulkheads or rock. And then breakwaters are much more common these days, and a lot of the structures that we see are actually a little bit of a hybrid between a groin and a breakwater, and most of the groynes these days are constructed either entirely or partially of stone. You see a lot less, you don't really see any purely steel structures anymore. So a lot of times, you have the breakwater structure actually beginning connected to land, extending outward, perpendicular from the shore, and curving, but you do also see sometimes, at times, breakwater islands that are completely detached from the shoreline. So that's just a little bit of terminology of some of the common types of practices that we see. Sand nourishment isn't done very often on its own. It may accompany some of these various types of protection, but that is also something that we authorize on the lakefront as well. So here's just an example of a typical shoreline protection design that we'd see. I chose this one because it shows a variety of different practices I discussed on the last page. So in the distance, you can see several steel groynes extending out from the shoreline, and in the foreground, there's a revetment that's right along the shoreline there, and that's that kind of hybrid structure that I talked to. Most of the time, it's referred to as a breakwater. It technically kind of begins as a groin extending out from the shoreline and curves out into that breakwater structure. And with a design like this, the intent is to break the energy of the waves and create that pocket to help trap sand. And the trapping of the sand itself is a form of shoreline protection. So by having a sandy beach there, it helps actually protect, gives space for the waves to break before impacting the shoreline. So we operate under two main authorities. So Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act, which goes back to 1899, and then Section 404 of the Clean Water Act. So under Section 10, we regulate all activities. So any work that's either over, under, or within the Section 10 waterway is regulated. So a good example of this would be, you know, the Chicago River, which is a Section 10 navigable waterway. If you are drilling a pipeline or something like that under the river, or, you know, there's tunnels that are underneath there, even if they're 100 feet underneath the river, we regulate them. And same with wires. So wires going over the navigable waterways, we regulate, as well as work within the waterway. And Section 404 regulates the discharge of fill specifically. So some structures are not regulated. For example, if you construct a pier that does not involve any discharge of soil, or other rock, or fill material, we don't regulate that within a Section 404 area. So Section 404 is specifically around discharge of fill. So when we authorize one of these shoreline protection projects, we are using both authorities, Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act and Section 404. And so Section 10 is important because it's the basis for all of our jurisdictional determinations. So our jurisdiction stems from connections to the Section 10 waterways. So Lake Michigan, Chicago River, portions of the Des Plaines River, Fox River out west, these are our Section 10 waters. There's a longer list of them, and we regulate wetlands as well, other lakes, inland lakes, and ponds, and things like that, that have a defined connection to those Section 10 waters. So we don't regulate all wetlands and all waters, only those that have that connection to those Section 10 waters. So the main shoreline permitting process that we use these days on the Lake Michigan shoreline is our general permit, and it's our Lake Michigan Regional General Permit. A few years ago, before this was established, we did do a large number of individual permits. And what this means is essentially, there is no, or the permitting is defined in regulation, whereas these general permits are sets of activities that have no more than minimal impacts on the environment, have a set of design constraints and limitations on them. If you can fall within those general permits, it's a faster permitting process, no public notice or public review is needed, because these impacts are viewed as being minimal on the environment. Individual permits are viewed as having more than minimal impacts, often have thresholds of, you know, over a half acre of fill, or other features that just don't meet these general permit requirements. So our nationwide permit program is sometimes used on Lake Michigan, but not a lot. We tried to cover the main activities that we see in Lake Michigan when we developed the Lake Michigan Regional General Permit. And so, again, you know, most projects these days are covered under that. And the benefit of that is, with the individual permit process, we have public notices that we have to issue. There's an individual review by the Illinois EPA for their 401 water quality certification, and what we noticed was, you know, during these high lake levels, we were getting a lot of demand for permits, and everyone wanted them immediately. And we didn't have the ability to do that quickly for anything other than those projects, the revetments that are just purely along the shoreline. Anything that extended out into the lake, it required an individual permit. And so at that time, we developed this general permit, and we had a long history of permitting these types of structures. So over that period of time, they had kind of developed a set of normal practices that were acceptable. You know, there were limitations on how far they could extend out, 120 feet. There was conditions about prefilling any of those areas that would capture sand, so that they don't trap sand from the littoral drift at the detriment of downstream properties. And they also, you know, we would consider public access and public accommodations along the shoreline. So we felt like we were in a good position to establish a general permit that basically took these practices that we had already been doing under this more lengthy individual permit process and put it under the more streamlined general permit. So I think that's been a big help for being able to get these permits done more efficiently. So the public interest review is something that we specifically do under the individual permit reviews, but we also do it at the time that we establish general permits. So when the Lake Michigan Regional General Permit was established two years ago, that permitting program was sent out for public notice for comment. And every five years, it's reissued, and that's the public's opportunity to comment on issues that they may be concerned about in terms of what's included within that. Part of our public interest review, when we issue that general permit and when we do our individual permit reviews along the lake, are some of the public and private usage along the lake. So we are considering both the private and the public needs for applications and how it affects those uses. Along Lake Michigan, you know, there's competing demands for that lakeshore frontage. You know, you have the private usage that's desired, and you also have public usage that's desired. And so we consider both of those things, and with the intention of trying to, you know, balance those competing uses. Again, as part of that public interest review, we look at the littoral movement of sand and ensuring that that littoral movement is not substantially disrupted by the project. And then we also issue public notices, as I mentioned, when we establish the RGP, and then when we're doing individual reviews. And that gives the public an opportunity to comment on these projects. So I'm going to go on these next few slides. I'll go through this rather quickly. It's, our Lake Michigan General Permit covers eight types of activities. We tend to use one more often than the others that I'll get into. It's limited to only Lake and Cook Counties, those areas of Lake Michigan within Illinois. We also do, in the Chicago District, have some territory in Indiana, but this permit does not extend into that area. So the first four activities include piers, docks, and boat ramps, navigational and mooring aids, temporary recreational structures, and number four, which is the one that we use primarily and most often, is the construction of shoreline protection measures. And this includes some of those limitations that I mentioned before, in terms of the 125-foot distance from the toe of the bluff. In order to qualify under that permit, you have to stay within those bounds. If you want to build a structure that extends out more than 125 feet, you can't use the Regional General Permit, you have to go through an individual permit review. Also, the prefill sand requirement, that calculates the amount of sand that the new structure is going to capture, and you put that amount of sand plus an additional 20% overfill. And again, that's to try to prevent impacts to downdrift properties by capturing that This is just like a typical design of one of these shoreline protection projects, and just wanted to give this as a demonstration of, you know, what these look like on the overhead view. One of the things I learned quickly when reviewing these plans is they look much larger when you look at them on the sheets of paper. You know, a lot of times, they look like these massive quantities of stone, and when you get out there, they're actually pretty low-profile when it comes down to it. A couple of things are noted on here. The visual ordinary high watermark is noted there. I'm going to get into what that is in just a minute. And what this is depicting is an existing structure of stone with a proposed extension. It doesn't show the limitation on here for the 125 feet, but this is what I'm talking about when you look at that structure extending outward into the lake. So outward into the lake would be up on the screen. You know, they have to be within that 125 feet in order to cover under the Regional General Permit. So the ordinary high watermark, this is our jurisdictional line on the lake. This dictates where we regulate and where we don't. Anything that's below the ordinary high watermark, or a lakeward of the ordinary high watermark, is where we regulate. Anything above that area, we do not. So we do have times where a revetment can be constructed along the shoreline. If it's entirely above the ordinary high watermark, we don't issue a permit for it. Oftentimes, they extend a little bit beyond it, but that's our line, and that line is determined based on a field assessment. So what that red line in the image is intended to show is where the ordinary high watermark was determined in the field. So the common characteristics that we see when going out and looking for the ordinary high watermark is sediment sorting, vegetation changes, litter or debris lines, and a slope change. And oftentimes, you see that slope change along with a debris line. There's often many debris lines. As you know, the lake is very dynamic, so sometimes it can be a little tricky to figure out which of those debris lines might be the ordinary high watermark, but oftentimes you do see a shift in the lake. So the one drawback for this in the Lake Michigan scenario is that it changes, you know, all the time. And so it doesn't provide a fixed line as to where our jurisdiction extends. So when we are reviewing a permit, we just ask that this be established upfront. We concur with where that boundary is, and we use that to process the permit. If you come in at a later time for another permit, we would reassess that at that time. And so as the lake levels go up and down, that line's going to fluctuate and change. So some people may be aware that in the past, we used to use a fixed elevation of 581.5, and that's the Illinois Great Lakes statum. What we were told is that there is no basis for doing that. The only way that we can determine jurisdiction is through this field-based assessment. So it was just a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, that we switched to doing this field-based assessment to determine jurisdiction. And just to finish up on those eight activities that are covered under the Regional General Permit, we also cover beach nourishment, maintenance of existing public harbors, oftentimes dredging activities of those, and then the discharge of dredged material. So again, these are not used as frequently, but we do get a fair amount of, you know, harbor maintenance permits or minor dredging maintenance permits. And in closing, I mean, this is kind of the topic for the night, of the various regulatory authorities that are involved here. You know, the Illinois EPA issues a 401 certification, so when we issue our Lake Michigan Regional General Permit, they issue a 401 certification that covers that permit program for the five years, and they have a list of conditions that have to be followed for that. They are also involved in doing an individual certification anytime individual permit is required. Illinois Department of Natural Resources, I have James Casey there, as he's the one who has historically been doing that for a number of years, but we do have Jay Keston here tonight, who has been taking over for him. Jim Casey is semi-retired, so he's still out there doing some work, so I kept him on here for tonight. And U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service actually also comes into play at times on the lake, and most frequently, this'll come into play with a piping plover. That's really the only species that we run into along the Lake Michigan shoreline, and the Fish and Wildlife Service has recently found that this species can stop over on beaches if they're a sufficient size. There's only the nesting population that's known in Illinois Beach State Park, but they do stop over during migration along the shoreline. So we are starting to look a little bit more carefully on some of the other beaches, you know, in the area. So it has to be a pretty substantial-sized beach, which a lot of them are going to be public municipal beaches where they potentially could nest. So those are things that I consider during my review, as well as any of the local municipalities or the county regulations, they can come into play as well while we're doing reviews. So plenty of people involved, and plenty of things to consider when we're reviewing these projects. So just in closing, here's my contact information. As I noted, you know, I'm no longer doing a lot of the permitting along the lake. Eric Cecil is now doing primarily most of the permitting, but I work pretty closely with him on this process. So either one of us are pretty, you know, would be available to answer any questions that you have about our program.
Great. All right, guys, you got any questions for Soren? Have at it.
Thank you very much. This was very helpful.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, sorry. Going back to the page on public interest review?
Yes.
Can you tell me a little bit more about the kind of information or studies are done in terms of these, like, first two bullets? Not the notification, but the access and usage? And then part two is, how has that, or has that not changed since you moved from the individual, heavy weight on the individual permit process to the general permit process?
Sure, sure. Yeah, so basically, you know, there's competing needs along the shoreline, and we know that there's a lot of people who love to walk along the shoreline, want to use it for recreational purposes, and then we also have private homeowners who want to use it as their beaches and for those uses. So when we are looking at that public and private usage and some of those competing demands, we're trying to accommodate both. So we are looking at when we install some, or when the shoreline protection structures are installed, we ask for reasonable accommodations over the structure. And so what that has looked like is constructing stone stairs and revetments where they extend across the beach where people would walk. We ask that stone stairs be put in to help provide some access over the structure. And that is now part of that Regional General Permit. So we used to just review that on a case-by-case basis through the individual review process, but that was tied into the Regional General Permit. So those are the primary uses that we're considering along the shoreline. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, a little bit. I mean, so there wouldn't be any specific studies done on the littoral sand movement, or how people are currently using some of the lakefront versus what the impact would be on any new proposed work?
Right, yeah. So we don't do any, like, individual studies for that usage as part of our review. When we used to do the public notice for each of the projects, you know, that is an opportunity where the public may write in and say, hey, this is an area where there's a lot of usage, where a lot of people are walking. That may, you know, influence our views a little bit in terms of, you know, how close we look at some of those accommodations that are provided. But, you know, so as part of the Regional General Permit, that opportunity is only every five years to provide those opportunity is only every five years to provide those types of comments, you know, and that's more just broadly programmatically. You know, I think the comments would involve, you know, maybe if people feel that those reasonable accommodations that are being done, is that not enough? There would be their opportunity to comment and say, you know, we should be doing something more to try to ensure that that ability to walk along the shoreline is preserved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Soren. Appreciate the presentation. And my questions were largely covered in what you just addressed, but when you're looking at that public-private usage, do you give any consideration to light, air, view impacts from any structure and that the structure be minimized to limit those kinds of impacts?
Yeah, so, I mean, there is a view shed consideration, you know, and aesthetics, you know. So as, in terms of aesthetics along the shoreline, shoreline protection structures are pretty common. So we would kind of view them as kind of part of the aesthetics of the lakefront in this area because, you know, they're common. If you took an area of shoreline that didn't have any of these and you went to install these, well, then that can have a much more impact on the view shed there. Generally, I mean, we do look at, like, how it can affect when people are on the beach and how it can affect the view of the lake. We do that a little bit, but the reality is what I've found over the years from going out there, they're typically not very high, and you can see over them when you're standing on the beach. You know, probably some of the highest ones I've seen were, was a core project, Rosewood Beach, you know, and those are, those are pretty substantial structures and potentially could limit some views of the lake, but we don't really see that too much with the typical type of project that we see.
Great. And just one more question. Is water quality an issue at all with these structures? Is that something that you look at? And if there are issues, what are they?
Right, yeah. So generally, there's not much in terms of water quality from the structures themselves. The stone has to be clean, quarried stone. The sand has to be clean sand, you know, and so that's captured actually by the Illinois EPA as per their 401 certification. So when they issue their 401 certification for the Regional General Permit, they have a set of conditions that have to be followed in terms of water quality. I would say the most impactful water quality consideration would be, you know, stormwater discharges. So there are some stipulations as part of the 401 certification that we consider for discharges, and essentially, they apply to municipal discharges. So a lot of the common, you know, discharges from individual lots that may be coming down the slope or maybe discharging into the lake, those don't raise a flag for the EPA as being a major concern. They're more interested in, in particular, the municipal discharges near public facilities.
Right.
So that is addressed in the RGP.
Great, thank you.
Yep, yep, no problem.
I've been looking at this. I'm trying to read up, get a study to as fast as I can. As you give them permits, and I kind of looked at what the shoreline looked at 20 years ago.
Yep.
And it seemed before that, when I grew up here, those steel groins, I remember Mottaw Road Beach there, just above the waterline.
Yep.
And as we've gotten the bigger groins that you've just shown, and it's kind of popped up in the last 20 years, how much effect, is it a domino effect that when they're put, it's the water flow, I think it goes north to south?
Yep, yep.
Is the domino effect happen as one puts in, it changes all the way down, and people have to continue to put more in because of that?
Right. So, I mean, the way that we look at that is, you certainly can. Anytime you put something perpendicular to the flow from north to south, it can affect the latoral movement. And there certainly are some studies that talk about how those structures can affect that latoral movement, and the way to compensate for that is to do that pre-fill sand. And so that's why we have that requirement in there of putting the 100% capture, so the amount that that new structure is going to capture, up to 100%, plus the 20% overfill, with the intention that some of that sand is going to go, and then it's going to re-accrete, but it's, the intention is to kind of make that the new normal shoreline. And by also, by limiting those structures to only 125 feet, there's less, much less potential that it's going to have substantial impacts on the latoral movement of sand. A lot of those structures that really have affected historically the movement of sand, you know, you have structures that are 200, 300, 400, 500 feet out into the lake, and then some of the harbors as well can be a big sink source, so.
But they are creating, in your thought, they are creating a domino effect.
You know, I would say that the newer structures, the way they're constructed now, don't have much of an effect. And there's another consideration that we have when protecting the shoreline is that there will be, there could be a potential for a reduction of sand that would be contributed to the latoral drift from erosion that is no longer happening along that shoreline. So, I mean, if these shorelines were not protected, they would, they'd be eroding, you know, and there's actually another function, the Corps did some studies on this, the shoreline would be eroding another mile back in areas, you know. So this is very dynamic. I mean, it's only been, what, about 10,000 years since the glaciers receded, and the lake is still responding to that, you know, and so it's a very, very dynamic system. And so a lot of what has affected the latoral movement of sand historically is more of the protection that's happened, like, you know, in Wisconsin and things like that. And it is, there is a cumulative effect of some of those things that have been done, and it's primarily from stopping the erosion of that shoreline. But unfortunately, we have a lot of development along the shoreline, and that's where, you know, we can't, you know, we have to balance that need to protect the shoreline, to protect property that's there, versus protecting that movement of sand. And our general view has been, this system is highly disrupted from all the historical, you know, effects that have happened. And the way that we're doing it now, by adding that sand in and things like that, is reducing the potential to add, you know, substantial additional impact to what has already happened.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is kind of awkward situation. I'll just do this. Sorry for pointing my back to you guys. Because it's a dynamic situation, I totally understand why the Corps was just inundated, you know, two, three years ago, and the need to go to a Regional General Permit, because it was just, was it one of the highest high-water marks ever, and it's starting to come down, and I don't know what the new forecasts look. Has the Corps, so that permit's in place now for another two years, that Regional General Permit?
Yeah, until 2025, I believe.
Okay.
Yep.
Has the request for these sorts of improvements into Lake Michigan abated because now, you know, the water level's high-water mark is coming down? It is a dynamic situation, but I guess in my mind, it's different when you're responding to permits to prevent, you know, huge structures going into the lake.
Right.
And then now that the lake has receded, you know, structures that are maybe trying to create private beaches. I mean, is that something in discussion at the Corps?
Yeah, I mean, it's, essentially shoreline protection, there's an inherent need in shoreline protection. So we don't do a lot to say, well, you know, lake levels are low or you don't really need this right now, you know, so we're not going to issue a permit right now, you know. We know that because it wants to erode over time, that if something isn't done now, whether lake levels are low or high, long-term, there is going to be erosion that's going to happen. And we don't necessarily want to be in the position where we're saying, let's wait until it gets bad and then let's do it, you know. There are some considerations with, like, that downcutting, that once you have that happen, it kind of creates a situation where it's worse. And, I mean, essentially, I mean, part of our permitting program is, we're in the practice of issuing permits. We don't deny permits. And so we may, we may affect how the permit's designed a little bit, but, you know, we're not, we don't tend to say, no, you can't do this, you know. We may, we may just alter the design. And, you know, certainly, the high lake levels were in impetus for doing that RGP at that time, but it was something that was kind of already under consideration before that because essentially, as I noted, these projects have very similar designs. You know, we're essentially issuing kind of the same general type of project over and over again. And we would do a public notice, we'd get the same types of comments, we'd have the same types of considerations. And so we kind of just took all that and wrapped it up into the RGP and said, hey, if you're doing all these projects that are routinely happening all the time, you can fit under their larger projects. They can go outside of that process.
Okay, that makes sense. But just to clarify, now that most of these structures fall within the, our Regional, yeah, Regional General Permit, there's really no ability to take public comment, is that right?
Yeah, during this period that it's active, there is no public comment period. So it's only the every five years when it's reauthorized.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
My only question is regarding the public-private access. So if you go to slide, I think it's just six slides, it shows the shoreline protection example, just a photo.
This one?
Yeah, that one right there. So in that case, I know you talked about, like, if someone puts a groin out, you have steps over it.
Right.
In this particular picture, if it's at the water, we've just lost walking across that. How does that come into play on, like, new projects?
Yeah, so, I mean, so you're saying because the water is all the way up to the rocks there, essentially?
Right, or if somebody wanted to not have a beach and just put rock all the way out to the water edge, well, you no longer have really an access across it.
Right, yeah. And that is one of the considerations with a revetment, and we do allow revetments that essentially take up all the beach that's there. And they do, they can inhibit some of the walking along the beach, but, you know, and whereas a structure like this is intended to capture some sand, may actually improve, you know, the ability to walk. I'd say, you know, the way we look at this is, you know, we ask for reasonable accommodations. It may not be perfect. It may not be accommodations on all lake levels in all conditions. There may be times when the accommodation isn't really there, but if there were no structure here at all, there would be, there would be no sand. There would be no ability to walk along that beach anyway. So this allows some ability to walk the beach, but it's not going to be ideal, just because the Lake Michigan shoreline is just not an ideal shoreline for walking along, you know, in its natural condition.
And I've heard over the past few weeks that the public walking is kind of like where your feet are wet. Is that...
Right, yeah, that's...
Is that actually a rule, or is that written somewhere?
That's into more of the DNR's regulations, but, you know, we, I'd say we consider it just very generally. We understand that beach walking is a thing. We don't really get picky in terms of where they're walking and things like that. We know that there's walking along the beach. We want to provide some sort of accommodation, whether it's right along the waterline. We don't want to have it real far back towards the toe of the bluff because then that can feel like it's private property and people may not feel comfortable walking. You know, that area, we do try to keep it closer towards the water, but, yeah.
Thanks, that's all I had.
Yep.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
And does the Army Corps follow up on the projects to ensure compliance, or do you identify what if property, what if there was extension of lakefront that was not permitted? Do you monitor for that?
Yeah, we do, we do some compliance, you know. Compliance is, you know, nationally, it's intended to be 10% of projects that are permitted, you know. And so we don't have a capacity to go out and certainly, you know, inspect all of these, but I would say over the years, we've actually inspected way more than the 10% of these types of projects. And so we do compliance, and when we do it, we're not necessarily looking at post-construction like as built to say, you know, you're going to build the revetment at this, or the structure at this level, you know, is it actually at that level? You know, we generally look at it, say, does this look like what was permitted, you know, and so from that standpoint.
Okay, which, and then that dovetails into my broader question, which is one of the reasons we're here, of course, and that is, can you, does the Army Corps have, would you say, working relationships with the municipal governments, and specifically up here on the North Shore from, say, Evanston to Lake Bluff, do you have working relationships with those towns?
Yeah, to varying degrees, you know, it just kind of depends. I mean, some of the communities, we don't work with much, and a lot of times, the feeling that I've had is, you know, that there isn't a lot of overlap in terms of what we're regulating to the point where we would coordinate on, you know, what they're going to do. A lot of the communities don't, they may regulate more on the bluff, you know, and so in the, some of those steep slope ordinances where we don't regulate in those areas, you know. So there just hasn't been a lot of overlap to do a lot of coordination. I would say we would be doing more if the locals were actually issuing permits for these structures as well. I mean, we certainly, so it just kind of varies. We've had some, with Will Matt, we've done some compliance inspections, so they've reached out to us when there's been non-compliance, and we've gone out in the field with them to take a look at it. So I would say there's not a lot of interaction, but this is, and this kind of, I didn't have a chance to really get this into the presentation, but one of the things I wanted to remark upon was, you know, as part of the Army Corps, we are not for or against any project, you know, we're just a permitting agency, and we're trying to balance the public needs for these types of projects and protection of the environment. So it's really a balancing game. And a lot of times, people kind of want us to be a little bit more of an advocate agency to kind of stop certain types of activities. We don't have much ability to do that. And so my message was going to be that, you know, if the village feels strongly about a vision that they would like for the shoreline, you know, there's much greater capacity to do that at your level than we really have at our level.
I see. Well, you, in this, the other agency reviews, you have the municipal governments front and center there.
Yeah.
So it must be from your perspective that the municipal governments might have a role to play in terms of this process?
Yeah, I mean, and it just varies, you know, and I would say that some of that coordination happens more with some of our wetland permitting than it has historically on the lake, because a lot of times, the municipalities just seem like they're not highly invested in what is happening when it comes to work within Lake Michigan. A lot of times, it's on land, and so there's just not as much overlap in what we're regulating.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Go ahead, Kim.
One question.
Yes.
Button.
We'll get used to doing that. Trustee Apitoff's question regarding the observation that in the last 20 years, there's a lot more structures going into the lake. When you are reviewing a permit, do you review the request for such a new structure in the context of 100 feet on either side of the property, a mile on either side of the property, the entire lake? What's sort of the frame of reference when you're reviewing?
Yeah, I mean, when we did the individual permit reviews, what we did was, on our public notices, we thought the area of influences is determined to be roughly like three properties to the north and 10 properties to the south is the area that we encompass, because that was the area in just kind of the general vicinity of that project. So when we're actually doing our review now, under the Regional General Permit, I mean, it's mostly focused on what's happening on that project, but it is considering what could happen on adjacent properties. For example, if you put in a steel groin, you may have a situation where though the waves are reflecting off of that structure and may cause erosion on the adjacent property. And so one of the conditions we have in our General Permit is to, when, if you have a steel groin and it is facing the adjacent property, you may have to face that with stone to help alleviate some of that erosion. So it's really, the effects are going to be a little bit, you know, just really probably one property to the south, one property to the north, and how that structure may influence erosion on those other properties. Yep.
Anybody else want to bite? Soren, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Really appreciate the input, and I feel a little smarter after hearing you, and hopefully each of these will help me even further. So really appreciate your time this evening, and thanks for coming out.
Yep, thank you.
Have a great evening. Okay, our next presenter is Illinois Department of Natural Resources Division Manager Steve Altman, who's going to help us get a little bit smarter than we are already.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to let us talk about our program. It's been a while since we've gone out and talked to it, especially during COVID. We're never shy to talk about our program. So one thing I will tell you right now, there may be some very similar slides to what Soren already had, but we're going to be focusing more on what our authorities are with the state of Illinois. And to give you a little background on myself, I manage all the regulatory authority that the Office of Water Resources have for the state of Illinois, so that includes floodplain, floodway, and public waters. So that's where, that's why I'm here talking to you tonight. To give you some information on the Lake Michigan shoreline, 63 miles. There's lakefronts, Chicago's 22 miles. The Illinois Beach State Park is nine miles long, and it's really the only near natural shoreline in Illinois. And to discuss this a little bit, approximately 85% has some form of shore protection. Our Chicago office, which is right now Acting Chief, is Jay Kessin, he's here tonight, they do permitting on the following bodies of water. Lake Michigan, Chicago River Main Branch, Chicago River North Branch Canal, Chicago North Branch, North Avenue, Chicago South Branch, and... North Avenue, Chicago South Branch, and the Calumet River. These are all designated Illinois public bodies of water. Um, these are not the only ones we have, we have them all across the state. Big rivers like, uh, the Illinois River and the Mississippi River are also public bodies of water. Um, our authority, uh, comes from the Rivers, Lakes and Streams Act from 1911. And then from that, uh, we, uh, adopted administrative rules, which is Part 3704 Regulation of Public Water. That's where our authority comes from. Regarding the public trust, Lake Michigan is a public body of water. Um, what's unique to, uh, Lake Michigan is, is that when Illinois became a state, um, the bed of Lake Michigan, um, stayed with the people of the state of Illinois. So essentially the bed of Lake Michigan is wherever the public water is, so it's changing all the time. Now, when we talk about our jurisdiction, we, um, as Soren had discussed, we go to the ordinary, um, high watermark or the bluff, whichever is more restrictive. Um, the current ordinary watermark, as Soren said, was 581.5, um, Great, International Great Lakes Adam. And, uh, we issue a joint permit with IEP A. So, um, essentially they get authorization from the Corps of Engineers. We do not issue a permit unless we have sign off from IEP A saying that they can issue a permit. We issue one permit from the state. Um, this is what goes into our review. Um, we make our evaluation based on the magnitude and activity and on existing conditions of the body water and in locality of activity and potential of activity to result in. So you'll see each one of the, um, topics we talk about there. The obstruction or interference with the navigability of the public water, encroachment of, on any public body of water, impairment of any rights, interests, or uses of the public of the, on the public body of water, and we also look at shoreline instability. These are some of the projects that we allow. Um, obviously the one we're really talking about, you know, it's come up interest recently has been bluff protection, but we do, uh, permit very, various types of projects through our authorities. We have three types of authorizations. We have a permit not required, which we do not, we get an application, we determine the permit is, a permit is not required, so we issue them a letter. We have a general permit, which, uh, permits special types of projects, and then we have what we call an individual permit. As you can see here, permit, uh, not required, obviously it could be something, uh, that is not in our jurisdiction. It could be at the bluff, we don't permit that. Um, it could be, uh, maintenance, we don't have, you don't have to permit maintenance in the state of Illinois. And, um, we have to, we will review the application form and, and inform the applicant that, um, no permit is required and we do not require a fee. We do have a general per, permit. Um, general permits come down, uh, when we have very similar types of projects that can meet certain criteria. So, um, to do it quickly, we have a, if it meets those criteria, then we can issue a general permit quickly. Um, it's usually mi-, uh, minor shore projects, and they're limited in length by, uh, 300 feet. A lot of times that's a, a revetment or a bulkhead. Um, we don't go on public notice with that, we don't, um, EPA doesn't have to sign off, we do charge a $500 fee. Here's an example of, uh, one in Winnetka. And we have a similar one, or we have a steel bulkhead in Evanston. You can see it's relatively small. Another one in, in Glencoe, another relatively small one. If it was, if it was bigger than the limits, then we'd have to issue a permit on it. Um, individual permits located at or below the toe of the bluff or the ordinary high watermark, uh, whichever is more restrictive. Um, we require a 30-day notice. Uh, we do not issue a permit until we have IEP A sign off. And if you're applying for a permit and it is going to require an individual permit, well, we have fees between on, uh, 30, 130 to $5,000 depending on, uh, the size of the project. Here's some, uh, projects that we issued, uh, individual permits for, uh, these groin fields. Stone groin in here in Will, Will Matt. Stone, stone spur. Breakwater beach system, very similar to a picture that, it's the same project that I think Soren had a picture of as well. It's from a different angle. Um, we, we have a, uh, joint application that we use with both the Corps and EPA. You use one application, it, each one of the agencies looks at different things in the application. The Corps has their authorities, we have ours, but it's all, the, the application itself looks the same. So it's, we, it's called a joint application, it's on our website, you can download it. Um, you'll need to send an application to each one of the entities, you don't give to one. And, uh, you give each one their own permit because they have different authorities. And, uh, sometimes it may take longer depending on the entity, what is, depending on what they're looking at. We do have guidelines for shore protection, um, we developed them in 2008. Um, they're not rule, it's just, um, guidelines to give, uh, an applicant some idea of some things we're looking for. Um, we have those on our website. Um, some information with the app, some minutia with the application. We asked for two copies, um, and then we, we, um, instruct that the applicant needs to notify, um, their three neighbors upstream of them and then 10 neighbors downstream that, so they get, they can comment if they have issues with the project. Some information about, um, what we require on the plans. So, yeah, when we get an application, we want to make sure that we, um, have an idea why they're doing the project. Uh, we'll evaluate it on some impacts, you know, impacts to public, because it's a public water. We look at public uses like boating, swimming, uh, fishing, whaling. We look at wildlife, how, the impacts, like Corps of Engineers does as well. We do look at, at, uh, adjacent property owners' rights on either side to make sure that, you know, they're not harming, uh, others. And then, uh, want to make sure that, uh, the project doesn't create an adverse impact to others. Um, we will, we will not issue an authorization unless we get, um, approval and writing from adjacent property owners. Um, some shore parallel revetments and bulkheads are another type of project, are located at the toe of the bluff. Um, as large as needed to protect the bluff and, and needs to be clean material. We also permit, uh, shore perpendicular structures similar to what the Corps has. You'll see a lot of similar numbers here. Um, we look at the lakeward end of the structure at, um, into Lake Michigan, no further than 125, uh, feet. All structures should provide some pedestrian action over, over and across and then on the landward side. Um, similar slide to what Soren had, uh, we do require the same amount of pre-mitigational fill. Um, it must be placed immediately after construction of this, um, of the structures. And you have to do a volume calculation, we're looking at that 120%. We do require monitoring afterwards, and I'll go into a little bit more detail a little bit later. Um, this describes the monitoring, we do a pre-construction survey. That actually has to be submitted to DNR. Um, they submit it to it and we'll, our, our director actually has to approve that. Um, we actually, we ask, ask for another survey within one month of construction, and then another survey a year after, and then a survey five years after that. And we may request more monitoring if we think there's an issue. We issue a 30-day public notice. Um, it's for all individual permit reviews on public bodies of water. Um, it's sent to all federal, state, and local governments, it's sent to adjacent property owners. Uh, we do post it on our website as well. Um, and when we get an, an objection, if we have a comment, we work with the applicant and they work with the response to that, so we can contact, um, the, uh, the, um, the person who made the, um, comment. Um, we may extend the public notice, um, as long as we need to. I think in, you know, the recent one that we, we came here, um, that brought us here today, I think we extended that twice. So we will, if we get a lot of comments and there's a lot of, uh, if there's some controversy, we will, um, extend the notice. Um, one of the permits, special, the permit can, special conditions are very important to this. Uh, the state of Illinois doesn't convey any title, uh, to the permitting or recognized title of the permitting to any submerged lands of Lake Michigan. And the perm, permitting, and the permitting successor shall make no claim whatsoever to any interest in any accretions caused by the activity. So like we talked about the pre-mitigation fill and the accretions they get, that is not their property. It is part of the bed. And this is your contact, it's Jay Kessin, he's here this evening. He's the Acting Section Chief and he's, uh, dealing with all the permits. Permit applications we get in the Chicago office.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
We'll put you through the grill now too.
Okay.
Kim, you want to kick it off again, as long as we?
Um, sure, I have, for now, I have one sort of very narrow question here. When it says a permit's not required. Um, on the page where it talks where permit's not required when maintenance is done, how do you all define maintenance versus having to do like a complete rebuild or a new project?
Yeah, I, it, it is a little ambiguous in the way we describe it. If it's maintenance, it would be like, say you're, uh, maybe scrubbing rust off the groin or maybe if you had a, a revetment, you just added some rock that it may have been, may have fallen off. But it's, it has to be very minor. It's like, you know, we, it's a public water. You typically, we want, the, it's very limited. It's like, we encourage folks if they, to come in and ask us before they do anything on Lake Michigan because it is a public body of water. So it's, it's very minor activities.
So it's really designed that anything that's sort of substantive would require a permit?
Yes, yeah, we would require a permit.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay.
Um, similar question to what we asked Soren. In your analysis, as far as, you know, looking to make sure that any project mitigates adverse impacts.
Mm-hmm.
Do you consider height, blocking, views, light, air, that sort of thing?
We do not.
Okay.
I mean, that, I mean, our, our authority is limited to a public water, so it's the activities within the water itself. Um, you know, tip, it, you know, there's some overlap between our permitting programs. I know that they have a little bit, a little bit more room to do that, but we do not. So, um, it, it does come up a lot on, um, not, not just up here, but on a lot of other projects as well, so. And the reason why is because we don't have it, we have authority over the public water, we don't have authority over, over anything else.
Over the environment.
Exact, exactly, exactly.
Uh, it, it, just on the last issue that, that one of the conditions of the permit is that the permittingee and their successors can't claim any right, uh, of ownership in the accreted sand. How does that work when you've got like a revetment, you've got all these huge rocks that are piled up on top of the lakebed? Is there a view as to who owns walking across the top of that pile of rock?
Well, the rock is in the lake and, and the state of Illinois owns the bed. So, I mean, it, I'd probably have to talk to a lawyer about exactly how we would, we would deal with that. But I'm an engineer, so it's, I look at things pretty simply. So it's like, I, you know, it, it might be something that we might be a little concerned about. Um, that's another thing too, is that when, you know, you build one of these projects and you, you know, they have a little cove, um, that cove is public water. And the water underneath, and the bed underneath it is public water. So if somebody wanted to take their kayak and go in one of these things, they can do that. There's not, there's nothing said that they can't do it. So that's something important to take away as well.
All right, very helpful, thank you.
No problem.
Rob, any questions?
Uh, sure. Um, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out what difference in the Army Corps and the IDNR. Okay, wait a minute.
One has tanks.
And one has tanks, yeah.
Yeah.
I like that. Um, so you talked about neighbor impact, I'm just trying to, could you just go through, let me, with me one more time? So on either side?
It's three, it's three upstream and then 10 downstream. That they, we want, we notify them of, uh, what the impacts are.
And if there's objection, you just?
But we, we encourage them to work it out with each other. Uh, before, before we really get involved, because, you know, obviously we don't want to permit something that a neighbor may have a huge issue with that act, well, which would fit within our administrative rule. So it's like if it's something that it, you know, could be, you know, it could, there could be some question about accreted sand or if they're, if, if, you know, maybe they didn't do the mitigation fill correctly or they're, you know, they don't, you don't, you think that there's another issue, then that, that concern needs to be brought up so we can consider it at that time.
Do you ever stop a project because of that?
That, I don't know. Um, I, I can't recall of one we've, we've, uh, dealt with, but it's just like a lot of it, a lot of this, you know, before we issue a permit, we take all this seriously about the permit and we want to make sure that, you know, that's why we have a public comment period because there's issues that, you know, we don't know about. And we want to make sure that the applicant can address those issues and, you know, be able to provide a reasonable response to those to make sure, you know, and try, and, you know, we ask them to work, work with those adjacent property owners to accommodate if they can.
Uh, I thought it was great to have follow-ups, it was one year, five years.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you right now, it's a little bit of a challenge right now because we are sta-, we, we are understaffed. We are going to be adding significant amount of staff in the next year. Um, we, I've actually got four positions posted up there right now, so, um, that's been a challenge.
But in, in an ideal situation, that's what you try and go back and do.
Yeah.
Is it on everybody, is on us, what percent of the, of the permits that are?
You know, we hadn't really set that criteria. It's something, uh, typically the way it's, I think it's happened in the past is, is we've gotten reports from adjacent property owners and say, hey, such, 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 got it. So a lot of times we, we may find out about it before we'd even go look at it because, because there may be something amiss.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Um, just a quick question, curious, why three to the north and 10 to the south? Is that, or do I?
Cause it's going, more of the latoral drift is going south.
Is it?
Yeah, that's, that's the reason why.
Okay, just curious, thank you.
All right, three, three pretty simple questions. When you talk about the toe or the 581.5, or the stricter? Is, how do you even know what the stricter is? Is it the lower water, is it the higher water? It's always hard to determine the stricter, isn't it?
It, it's the, the one that would say that we would have authority over it. Now, neither, you know, that's, that's the one that, um, we, we would, we would pick. It's like the bluff is limiting and then the, the height is limiting. So if, if the, if the, the hi-, the water surface is limiting, then we won't go to the bluff. But if, if, if the, uh, if, if the toe of the bluff is, you know, inside that, then we won't, we will go there too.
That goes back right into my next question then. When you talk about the perpendicular structure, 125 feet from the toe of a bluff, was there really is no obvious bluff like you might see in Winnetka?
Yeah.
Like when you look at North Avenue Beach?
Yeah.
You know, it goes way up. What is considered the toe? How do we know that, or is that subjective for every piece?
It could be subjective, it'd be, I would, the, what I would suggest is you contact our office if you're going to do that activity and then we can make that decision. I mean, that's, um, when Jim Casey, when he was, uh, Section Chief, that's a lot of what he did. And, um, that, you know, contact our office and we'll be able to tell you exactly what it is.
And in my last, the three up, the three up and 10 down?
Mm-hmm.
It talks about property owners or lots, not really linear feet?
No.
Cause you could have 10 50-foot lots.
Yeah.
Or you can have your neighbor to the south being Illinois Beach State Park.
Exactly.
It, it really is just that, 10, 10, 10 owners.
Yeah.
Okay, again, probably not a Winnetka issue, but.
Yeah.
I'm trying to learn other things too. That's it, thanks.
Yeah.
Um, same kind of questions I asked Mr. Hall.
Okay.
In terms of the working relationship the IDNR has with municipal, municipal governments, particularly from Evanston on down to Lake Bluff, let's say. Um, what is the IDNR's perspective on working with municipal governments? Where, where do you feel like your jurisdiction might end and the municipality might step in?
Well, I know, I mean, I can tell you that our, my office already works with the communities already through National Flood Insurance Program. So, um, um, Community Action, our Community Assistance Program is operated under, uh, my statewide programs. So we do have that relationship. We will, you know, if, if a community chooses to go to a higher level, we'll definitely work with them on that. But, you know, we are limited with our authorities and, you know, um, I believe we have three of them right, three communities right now. I think it's Evanston, Lake Forest, and Highland Park, I believe have, um, some authority on the bluff. But it really, I mean, it, it is, it is a good thing, I think, for the communities to do that. But as far as our authorities, it really doesn't, doesn't intersect. We, we permit what we permit. And I know, I, it's kind of akin to, uh, we permit activities in floodways in, in Illinois and, and communities have floodplains. So, uh, we permit the floodways, but we don't get involved in the floodplain, we let the community take care of that.
So, uh, going back to Trustee Kreip's question on, uh, mitigating negative impact, whether it's views or air quality or what have you. So far, I think the Army Corps doesn't deal with that. IDNR doesn't deal with that. Who deals with that?
Uh, that could be up to the communities, I would think. I mean, it's, we're, we're, you know, limited, you know, we, we do the permitting or, uh, we do look at activities on Lake Michigan, but we look at all public waters in the state of Illinois. And that's, that's where we derive our authority there. So we don't do that on other public waters, which we do get complaints about that as well. You know, on views of the Illinois River or the Mississippi and that. And it's, unfortunately, that is, that is just something that we don't have the authority to do.
So, so what, I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing is that the jurisdiction of Army Corps, jurisdiction of IDNR, it's pretty, pretty concrete, if you will, where it is. Um, you're not necessarily- You're not necessarily saying that a breakwater is too high or too low. You're not necessarily saying that the views are obstructed or not obstructed. You're not, air quality is being impacted. Aquatic life and so on will go to the Illinois EPA.
Right.
Is what I'm, what I'm hearing here. So the two permitting agencies will only go so far.
Right. I mean, we're, we're, yeah, we're limited in where we can go.
You're limited. Okay, okay. Good. All right, thank you.
I forgot the button too, so don't feel bad. Uh, one question, and it's more because I've been paying attention to a lot of the conversation here in the community over the past several months. And I've, I've, I've heard people making statements related to this coastal management program or this.
That is actually another subdivision within, within OWR. It's another division. It handles more of the environmental impacts. It's not, not in our permitting group. They're actually located in our Chicago office as well. They actually used, used to be at their own office subdivision under DNR, but it has been moved, it was moved into OWR last, or, um, last year.
So what authorities does that particular group or this, or this document, the, hold on here, draft coastal management program document? I mean, what, what authority or force does that document and that group have relative to having any sort of dominion over the lakefront?
It, it's limited. I mean, they, they, their authorities look at different, like, it's more aquatic habitat type projects with relation to, I don't know where they get their money, they get the money, I think, through the C grant. They get money from EPA. They get money from NOAA as well. And it, it deals a lot with aquatic life and diversity in that. They, they do, you know, obviously do work on Lake Michigan, but they, it, the, their extent actually goes into Lake Calumet. I don't, I'm not quite as familiar with their program, because they haven't been within OWR for a while. And, I mean, we definitely have people that could come talk to you about that.
But ju, just fundamentally, do you know if they, they have any authority or their reg, or their, their management program documents have any, any true authority over dictating what happens on the lakefront?
I do not believe they do.
Okay.
Can't confirm that, but it's, you know, it's typically when you have a construction project like you have here, you have EPA, you have the Corps, and you have the state of Illinois. And that's pretty much on any waterway in the state of Illinois. So.
So it'd be safe to assume they definitely don't have any permitting authority?
Right, they do not.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Well, thank you so much for coming out this evening. Really appreciate it.
No problem.
We're all getting a. I just want to know when the last time you two guys have ever been in a room and got applause? Trust me, our meetings never start with, with applause when we're, when we're talking about these sort of things. Okay, our, our, our next presenter would be Village Attorney Peter Friedman. You're number three, right?
Thank you, Mr. President. So we prepared, as you all know, a very extensive memo. It was a legal memo and we took, I thought, a little bit of an extraordinary step by making that public. We did not put attorney-client privilege on that document. And it's very extensive. I'm not gonna go through. Everybody's had a chance to read it. But I did want to emphasize four or five points, both because they're either significant or because they're unsettled. And I want to emphasize that, because one of the questions we got was, if there's unsettled issues, tell us about them. I think Mr. Dearborn asked that question. So first, just to summarize again with regard to jurisdiction. Obviously, federal jurisdiction is preeminent. Federal jurisdiction extends, as Soren said, to the ordinary high watermark. The, it's codified in federal statute. The Army Corps handles the regulations. Lakefront property owners need to get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. The next level, state. Federal government is preeminent. It is not exclusive over, as we'll see. As, as was mentioned, the states own, Illinois owns, all of the waters within the state and they have the authority to regulate. There is no, in Illinois, there's no broad preemption that the state has, as I'll mention, as I'll say, over municipalities. State also extends to the ordinary high watermark, their jurisdiction. And lakefront property owners, construction projects also have to get permits from the Army Corps. Municipa, for, with regard to municipalities, there's no broad preemption. As I said, federal or state statutes do not preempt municipalities, but there is a hierarchy. So if you just knock things out here, if the federal govern, if the Army Corps says no, then neither the state or the village can issue a permit and authorize construction along the lake. If the Army Corps says yes, I'm sorry, if the, yeah, if the Army Corps says yes, but IDNR says no, then the municip, the project can't proceed. Either municipality can't issue a permit and authorize, because the Army Corps has, or the IDNR has to issue a permit. If the federal government and the state government say yes, but the village, if we had a village with regulations and permitting in place, said no, and pursuant to proper regulations, then the project could not proceed. The municipalities have that type of authority. Obviously, if they all say yes, it can proceed. If any one of them says no, it can't proceed. The geographic limits of the, of the village's jurisdiction, it's very significant, because the village has a very unique charter. The village was not created by state statute. It was created by a specific charter, a specific piece of legislation the General Assembly passed to establish the village. And in that, the state, which is responsible for the creation of all municipalities, can do whatever it wants with them, said the village's juristic corporate boundary is .5 miles into the lake. Very unique situation. Not all, most along the lake do not have that. Most, a lot were not chartered municipalities. Because the village corporate boundaries extend .5 into the lake, it's, it's within the village. So we have all of the, all of the things we can techn, theoretically, everything we can do on land, all of our authority we have on land, we also have .5 miles into the lake. And that's significant also, because anything we try to do outside our corporate boundaries, we can only do pursuant to state statute. We have no home rule power outside our corporate boundaries. So to do anything outside our corporate boundaries, we have to look to state statute. So I, I mentioned this next statute, because I've gotten a lot of questions about it. There is a statute in Illinois that, section 744 of the municipal code, that says that all municipalities have jurisdiction, which is separate from incorporated territory, but jurisdiction three miles beyond their corporate boundaries, assuming that their corporate boundaries was the water's edge. For us, it's a little different. That means we go .5 and then we've got three more miles beyond that. I don't know what we would ever do with that authority. I don't know any municipality that has exercised it anywhere, anywhere near that, even .5 miles out. But it exists. But it's really not practical. It's, it's academic. But the .5 miles is real. We have zoning authority within that, within that area. And so a, as David will explain, there's a whole host of things that are within that power, both building code and zoning, that we have the authority to enact if we ever wanted to. The limits of our municipal power, obviously preemption, but as I said, we've determined that there is no preemption. But in order to regulate, you have to have regulations. You cannot, courts will strike down municipal action unless the municipality can point to a specific ordinance or a code provision that says X, Y, or Z. Without that, you know, we're a nation of laws. We're a village of laws. We need laws in order to do things. And then there's the normal reasonable of the standards. We can't enact arbitrary and capricious, unreasonable regulations. They have to withstand the normal tests. Next issue is where property lines and the public trust lines are drawn along the shore, along the lake. So first, the public trust doctrine, and this is the only part of this where I'm gonna read, because the language is important, generally provides that primarily in recognition of the importance of navigable waters to society, a state holds the navigable waters within its borders and the lands underlying them in trust for the benefit of the public to use for certain purposes. Those purposes are usually, and historically, commerce, fishing, and navigation. And in some states, including Illinois, the public trust uses include shore recreational activities, such as bathing and swimming and other similar activities. And as Soren said, the public trust doctrine tries to strike a balance between the rights of the public to use important natural resources and the rights of littoral landowners to enjoy their own property and their own property rights. So, um, that, but all of that then comes down to, okay, where do we draw those lines? And that gets into a whole bunch of issues with regard to the water level. You know, what is public and what is private land for title purposes? Where does the public trust stop and start regardless of title purposes? But where is that line for the public trust doctrine? How do you deal with artificial accretions, certain artificial accretions? And then what about, what lines do we use for our own zoning purposes? So I want to talk about the title and public trust line first. I can deal with both of those at the same time, because in Illinois, they are the same lines. The notion that we did not address this in our memo is just plain wrong. We addressed it specifically. We specifically stated the following. The demarcation line in Illinois between public and private land ownership is the same demarcation line that identifies where land held in trust begins and ends. Both lines are the normal water line. Illinois has specifically rejected the ordinary high watermark for purposes of, for purposes of title and public trust. Now, that is all based on some very old US and Illinois Supreme Court decisions, but still good law. And the Illinois Submerged, Submerged Lands Act and other authority. That's the law, at least as it is today. There is, there is no Illinois case that states that the public trust property extends into private property, beyond the water's edge. And you can look back at some very old cases, even before the older cases, and, and pick some language out of those cases and make an argument that it should extend beyond the water's edge. And you can make policy arguments about why it should or why it shouldn't. But, but there's no case that says that. And, and the, and we're talking about a pretty significant property issue. You're talking about the, the land in between the water's edge and the high watermark. The, we know that for title purposes, the water's edge is the dividing line. So lake, landward of the water's edge is owned privately. You're talking about whether to declare up to the ordinary water, uh, ordinary high watermark, that the public has the right to use that private property. It's a pretty significant issue. So before me or my form is going to opine that that area is now somehow public, truly public, we're gonna need a case. We're gonna need a definitive Illinois case that, or a statute that says that. And it just doesn't exist right now. So until it does, we, our opinion is that it's the same line. Now, I recognize, IDNR just said that, you know, and Soren talked about people walking along the beach. And I don't think neither one of those agencies include in their consideration of that fact, that people do walk along the beach, whether, who owns the land underneath they're walking. They know what happens, so they're dealing with that. But that does not mean that from a strictly legal standpoint, that, that's public trust doc, uh, public trust land. It's, we just don't have a definitive answer to that. The next issue is the one of accretion. And I'm using the accretion, there's all sorts of fancy words about alluvian, erosion, like all this stuff. I'm just using accretion to describe the increase in land that can be caused by some of the improvements that we've been talking about, the permitted improvements. There's, and, and the significance here is that when land is created, who owns it? Is it public trust? Is it not? Generally, naturally occurring changes, the property owner is subject to natur, naturally occurring changes. So if naturally occurring things cause the land to increase, they get the benefit of it. If it causes it to decrease, they don't get the benefit. They have a negative impact. Sudden storm-like changes don't count in changing any lines. Artificial causes caused by third persons, also, the property owner gets the benefit of those changes, if any, but also perhaps the detriment of those changes, if any. We know that a property owner itself, him or herself, who causes the accretion, doesn't get the benefit of it. The, 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 the gap in what we know is whether a current property owner can enjoy the benefit of something a predecessor owner or three predecessor owners ago did. We just don't have a case on that. And I haven't been able to find a real case really anywhere. I put in the memo, a law of, um, an art, a treatise piece that cited to a case in Florida, but the case in Florida really wasn't that on point. So I just mentioned that, because that is an unknown. And, and you, the whole issue about the land created by accretion, you can just look at the lake. How would we, how would a normal person ever know how land that they're walking on got there? It's, it's a very kind of amorphous, hard to day-to-day calculate or determine really specifically. But from a purely legal standpoint, that's what we know about accretion. And, and I know that IDNR in their, and it just came up, in their permit condition, says that the permitee, if I understood this correctly, the permitee has to acknowledge that they will not claim ownership of any newly accreted land as a result of the improvement that is permitted. Totally fine, like, I totally get the condition. Absent that condition, I, it, that, that property owner may not be able to enjoy it, but I just don't know about the next property owner. Except if, obviously, there can't be collusion between property owners. That would knock out a subsequent property owner. Last issue is whatever line we just, whatever line we're talking about does not necessarily have to be the line we use for our zoning code. You know, normally, the line, you know, inland, the, the line we use is the property line. Property line on the east side of these, is, is, as we just spent a lot of time talking about, very, very movable and, and all sorts of uncertainties. But we can decide, we don't want to use the water line anymore. We want to use some other line. And we have a lot of discretion in doing that. And some communities have. I know David put together the summary. But we get to choose that, and I think that's significant. So that concludes. Thank you.
Okay, guys. Now you got the man here. Go Adams. Questions for Peter?
Kim doesn't. Andy?
No, no questions. Just thank you for the thorough analysis and complicated issue. And really appreciate laying it all out, making the complex relatively straightforward for us. And, yeah.
I wish I could throw a lot of questions at you. It was very thorough. And it really.
And it really taught, you know, it really laid out everything we'd asked you, which I knew was a tall order in a short time during Christmas and New Year's. But this is incredibly helpful to lay out what the options are for us. So thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah, I'm going to echo the same thing. I also really appreciate that we made that available to the public because I think that transparency is important. We're not trying to hide the ball. We're just trying to understand an issue that, you know, clearly really never was in discussion previously. But for me, particularly with the issue of stormwater, water quality, all those issues. And, you know, as many people know, I originally practiced in Seattle where we do have steep slope regulations and things like that. I mean, those are real issues. So I really appreciate being able to share that with the residents in the community. Thanks.
All good, thank you.
Thanks. Peter, it's, your firm represents other communities along the lake shore, is that correct?
Yep.
Which, which other communities are you representing today?
From north to south, Lake Bluff, Highland Park, Glencoe, us. Highland Park, Glencoe, Northbrook, they're not on the shore.
Lake Bluff.
Lake Bluff, I said.
Yeah. Okay. So fair to say that you've had a fair amount of experience with some of these issues?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I thought the memo was fantastic.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, Peter, again, thanks. Thanks for this memo. I, it, it answered a lot of my questions. I didn't have a lot of things to question. I, I know as we get into this deeper in the future, we're going to definitely be relying on your firm and hopefully other professionals in the, in the space to help guide us if we decide to, to move forward on any, any of those sorts of things. But I think this is a really good baseline document, and I hope the community really appreciates the fact that these sort of memos generally don't get published. I mean, they're, they're, they're produced for the benefit of those that you're working for, which is the, the village council. And it's up to us to elect whether we want to share these sort of things or not. And to put it out there, I think was fantastic. And hopefully it helps clear up some of the questions that folks out in the audience have to relative to a lot of these really complicated and murky issues relative to the lakefront. So I thank you for that.
Thanks.
Could we take a five-minute break? I, I really need to take a break.
Take a break too.
Well, he's probably over sixty. Hey, I'm there too, pal. I don't have a beer.
Pardon?
Don't have a pocket, I'll get it up here. Hopefully go far.
All right, folks, we'll pick up where we left off. Our next presenter this evening is the community development, our community development director, David Schoen. Take it away, David.
Good evening. This evening, I would like to briefly summarize the village's zoning regulations for lakefront properties, as well as review zoning and development regulations for other lakefront communities. My review will focus on the landward side of the lakefront. Jim's will go more into the lakeside. So to quickly review, in Winnetka, all of the lakefront property is zoned R2 single-family residential. The district allows single-family homes and their accessory structures by right. The zoning district also allows other institutional uses, park and open space uses, and municipal service uses by special use permit approval. The R2 district calls for larger lots, 24,000 square feet or larger, which the zoning ordinance defines as a small estate character is what's trying to be achieved. The zoning code states that a lot shall not include any part of a platted lot that lies beyond the water's edge of Lake Michigan. So even if the original plat of subdivision from years ago shows the lakefront extending to the east and under the current lake water level, for zoning purposes, that portion of the lot is not a part of the lot for zoning purposes. Since that area is not considered part of the zoning lot, that portion of the lot beyond the water's edge is also not included in lot area calculations for zoning purposes. For zoning purposes, the lot line along the lakefront is defined by the code as the front lot line. The required minimum yard in the R2 district from that lot line is 50 feet. The zoning ordinance does allow certain accessory structures in a required front yard, which are listed here and are included in the staff report. Given the water's edge moves with changes in the water level of the lake, there are zoning measurements and standards which are impacted, which change over time. The impacted zoning measurements are noted in black on the slide, and the impacted zoning standards are noted in blue, and I'll go into that a little more. The lake water level impacts what is allowed at a particular point in time, and what is allowed will vary at times depending upon the lake level. In the staff, we presented an example of how the changing lake level impacts the location of the water's edge. To the left is an aerial from 2005, when the lake level was lower than in the image to the right, which is from 2020. Based upon our zoning definition, for zoning purposes, the lot area is larger, or was larger, in 2005 than it was in 2020. Also in the staff report, we included zoning measurements and calculations for this property, for which we had permit applications. They're in slightly different years than the images above, but they also show, on the left are lower lake level figures, and on the right are higher lake level figures, which show how our zoning standards are impacted by this changing water's edge and what's considered part of the lot. The village does review site improvements in terms of their compliance with the zoning requirements, except the community development department's practice for approximately the last 20 years or more has not been to review any lakefront work that requires a permit from IDNR or the Army Corps of Engineers in terms of zoning compliance. Given that the IDNR and Army Corps of Engineers have been responsible for reviewing elements associated with revetments, breakwaters, and docks, which can extend, can extend landward of the water's edge, the department staff has not reviewed those elements for zoning compliance. That has been the practice. So we have looked at the zoning and development regulations for other lakefront communities on the north shore. Those communities, as you can see here, have varying definitions of what they consider to be the lot line along the lake. Some of these communities don't clearly define what that is, not nearly as clear as our code defines what that lot line is, and they've had to make interpretations of what that is. As you'll note here, all of them define it as the rear lot line. A rear lot line is often defined as opposite the front lot line, which is the lot line along the street. Our zoning code says the lot line along the lake is a front lot line by definition. As you will note here, a number of them use the water's edge as we do in terms of what that lot line is, but others use other elements, such as the ordinary high watermark, or the mean lake level. So going back to our earlier example, this image illustrates the approximate location of the lakefront lot line if we use the ordinary high watermark in light blue. That's the 581.5 number that Mr. Altman mentioned earlier. Or the mean water level, which is in green, which the village of Willmette will use, to locate the lakefront lot line for zoning purposes. For informational purposes, I have also included the base flood elevation for the lot in question. As noted in the slide, the last line there, the base flood elevation varies along the lakefront. For different properties, we'll have a different elevation, a base flood elevation. In this instance, the base flood elevation for this parcel is 587. Only two communities do not include the entire lot for zoning purposes. As noted in the staff report, Kennelworth and Lake Forest, they'll define the zoning lot, and then in terms of calculating building, allowable building area, they'll only include a portion of that lot, or give credit for a portion of that lot. So of the seven communities, five of the communities have steep slope or bluff regulations. Two of them do not. The two that do not tend to have fewer, if any, bluffs, therefore, they have not established such regulations. Also, these communities that have steep slope regulations, they often also have ravine regulations in addition to bluff, but this evening and in the staff report, I'm just talking about the bluff. So first, you need to define what is a steep slope. So four of the five communities use a slope that's 10% or greater. Lake Bluff uses 20% or greater. Then you need to define what the steep slope zone or bluff protection area is, and each community defines it a little differently. In general, it's an area from some point near the water up to a point on the table land, but how they define it each is differently. Some communities, like Highland Park on the left here, and Kennelworth, basically define the steep slope zone as where the land slope, the slope of the land is greater than 10% plus some setback from when it stops being greater than 10%. Other communities like Glencoe in this image, and Lake Forest and Lake Bluff, define the steep slope area as a line with a vertical angle, such as 22 degrees, which is this line here, extending from a point near the toe of the bluff, or the high watermark, to a point then to the table land. And then, Lake Forest and Lake Bluff also extend the protection area so many feet from where that line meets the table land. So Lake Forest extends it back 75 feet from that point. Lake Bluff extends it 40 feet back from that point. The communities then also define, as I've already mentioned for some of them, how far, how close can a structure, a building, an improvement be constructed near that steep slope area? And that information was presented here and in your staff report. And then the community will define what construction activity can occur within that steep slope zone. And as you can see here in this summary, some communities allow more activity than other communities allow. And the last thing I'll mention before turning it over to Jim, that is, we did identify, we did identify one community, Highland Park, that does have development regulations for activity that occurs within the lake. Highland Park, Highland Park's regulated activities include construction, alteration, modification, demolition, or removal of any new or existing structure, and also includes adding, dumping, dredging, or removing sand, rocks, or any refuse, garbage, or other discarded materials. And as I said, Jim will elaborate a little more on that in his presentation. So that, that's a summary of our zoning regulations and what are some zoning and development regulations that the other lakefront communities have in place, and I'd be happy to address any questions.
Great. Questions for David?
Thank you, David. This was great, along with the memo. If we, I didn't realize, it looks like we're the only community that refers to the east line as the, the east lot line is the front lot line. If we even within our existing setbacks change the nomenclature to the east to be the rear setback, I'm sorry, the rear line, how would that change the setback to even the current water, or the water's edge? Is that what?
Oh, and you're gonna have to help me with this.
I know, I could have looked at my zoning code, but I didn't.
Is 25.
It would be less. Okay, that's right. Thank you.
I don't really have any questions, David. Thank you. Just want to point out for everybody that you all put in a ton of time over the holidays and pulling this together, and it really is extraordinary. I feel sort of bad because the Army Corps and the IDNR got an applause, but Peter did not. So, thank you, and thank you, David.
That's pretty good. So I was obviously trying to figure out how we figured, how we match up, and when you look at steep slope, it looks like everybody from Kennelworth North has steep slope regulations of some sort. Am I right? Did I miss?
Yes.
And so we're the only one that doesn't at this point?
From Kennelworth North, we're the only ones.
We're the only one. Okay. The, the, I talked so many Lake Forest, I guess, refuse used to be dumped from, from land, from working on the lake, used to be just dumped in the lake, and they're still there, and it's coming onshore now? Is that, it is, just so you know. Do we have anything that blocks, is that all, that can't do that anymore? They can't put refuse?
I don't believe so, no.
I would hope so. Thank you. To me, it was just really looking at our activity versus everybody from Evanston up, and it seems there's some pretty big disparity from what other communities are doing versus us, so this is really helpful, so thank you.
No, no other comments. Thank you for putting this together. Just really quickly, though, just generally, because we are the outlier by classifying the eastern property line as the front yard versus the rear yard, generally, there are, is it safe to say there are more restrictions in the front yard, just generally in the zoning code as I remember it?
Yes.
So it gives us another enhanced level of protection over treating it as a rear line, because I think we have a lot more permissive structures in, in the rear. Okay, thanks.
And just to talk about that front yard facing the water, all the work I do all over Illinois and other states, water's always a front yard, typically on a zoning lot, so... Well, it's okay, I'm just, typically it is the front, it's the water. The only thing I don't understand, and maybe you may not know the answer, but maybe Army Corps is here, if they're still here, how does, how does the base flood elevation change lot to lot along a Winnetka-Lake Michigan?
Jim will get into that.
Okay, all right, good, thanks.
Real quick, David, I think I know the answer, that you probably won't be able to answer this, but I think in the memo, you said there are 112 properties along the lakefront. Did I read that somewhere?
Yeah.
Did I read that? So of the 112, do we have any idea what percentage of those would have a steep slope issue with a 10% grade or more?
I would say almost all of them.
Almost all of them would?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Let me just add to that.
Sure, sure.
You gotta be careful with that 10%, that little diagram that they had.
Yeah.
If you start from the toe of the water and use that number, you may be into the middle of some of the lots on our lake, you know, because it's just very natural, whereas a lot of ours are very steep, so just keep that in mind if you're thinking ahead.
Yeah, actually, I was gonna, two things. Do you have any idea of the history of why we decided that the lakeside was the front yard? I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but I'm just curious why we are the outlier. No?
I don't.
And just an observation, I thought it was interesting that you could almost tell that there were two different consultants advising various communities, because some have this complicated angle thing that projects through, and then measurements off of that, and it's very interesting how they're similar, and then you have others that are working off a completely different set of criteria. And certainly, that's coming from, I would imagine, the consultants that were guiding the communities, not the people at the table trying to figure out the best way to do this sort of thing.
Or look and see what our neighbors were doing, and which one looks better for us, whether it was consultants or just looking at what others were doing, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think with those complicated formulas, that it was probably something that was...
At first, sure.
They led that horse to water, for sure, so, well, thank you, David. It was a great presentation, and we all appreciate the amount of time that's been put into this on a really short, short order, and I know you put a lot into it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next and final presenter this evening is Engineering Director Jim Bernal, and Jim's gonna take us through some of the other pieces of the puzzle that David just laid out for us. Take it away, Jim.
Been doing some cleanup here, good engineering, that should wake everybody up. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Engineering Department's current engineering lakefront regulations and review procedures for everyone. The representatives from the US, the US Army Corps and IDNR have covered the review process, so I won't be repeating the information that they've provided in their presentation. My goal this evening is to provide you an overview of the information I have provided in our staff memo. As well, I'll be outlining our current review process and providing some additional information about what some of our neighboring communities are doing related to the reviews for in-water projects. We will also be providing some information on studies that are being performed by regulatory agencies, such as the Coastal Management Program. I know there was a question about that, so I just got a little bit of information. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started here. So currently, there are 112 total parcels that abut Lake Michigan in the village of Winnetka. Of these parcels, eight of them are owned by the, by the Winnetka Park District. Two of the parcels are owned by the village of Winnetka, along with Utility Rightofway, and include the power station and water plant. The remainder of the, of the properties are privately owned and are classified as single-family This slide is an example of some of the shoreline protection projects in the lake. This is not a complete list, it's just meant to be an example to highlight this. The projects shown here were all permitted and constructed after 2007. The projects shown here are primarily breakwater improvement projects. The projects are shown, are for permits the village currently has on property file, and that were issued with, in coordination with the US Army Corps and IDNR. Many of the structures along Lake Michigan shoreline date, may date back prior to 1970. Staff's currently working with both the Army Corps and IDNR right now on making sure that the village has the most current historical database of all the structures along the Winnetka shoreline, and this is because some of the information wasn't gathered over So after speaking with our neighboring communities and evaluating existing aerial imagery, we have confirmed that most municipalities consist of developed shorelines with existing groynes, breakwaters, and armored shores. Winnetka is somewhat similar to other communities in the types of arming and shoreline protection projects that have been permitted. And this, in this photo here is just an example of just some of them, and I think Soren had some pretty good exhibits as well to kind of highlight what a groin or a breakwater So this slide is a, is a summary table of neighboring communities to the, to the north and south of Winnetka. Shown as well are some examples of groynes and breakwaters in neighboring communities. On the top left is a, is a larger breakwater project that's in Lake Forest, again, example on Highland Park, Glencoe, and Evanston. As you can see in the table, the village of Winnetka is relatively close in the total number of in-water structures for municipalities that has, have similar bluff shorelines. I would note that the totals shown here are calculated from recent aerial imagery. These totals do not designate between size of structures, but just merely our representation of the total number of in-water appurtenances that exist. I would note that as you move south along the Lake Michigan shoreline from Winnetka, the height of the bluff diminishes, as, as was noted previously. With the reduction of the bluff, there is a substantial drop in the number of groynes and breakwaters are installed to protect the base of the bluff, as, as you can see from this table here in Evanston and Kennelworth. This is primarily because the shoreline is mostly level with those private properties. So next, we're gonna discuss here the village's permitting process. So as, as part of the Engineering Department's review, staff relies on the following village codes: ordinances, design policy manuals, and MWD watershed management ordinance. As a reminder, the following permitting review information will focus on properties along the lake. the lake, but also apply for other properties in the village as well. So some of the items I will note will apply all the way throughout the village. These are the primary codes that staff utilizes during the review process. And I'm just gonna highlight that we have our stormwater management code, our flood hazard protection ordinance, our engineering, design, and inspection policy manual, and of course, MWD's WMO guidelines. Each of these covers, covers specific permitting and design requirements. In addition, some MWD/WMO requirements overlap with village requirements as the village council through the years has adopted certain federal, state, and county requirements. So during the permitting process, we'll talk a little bit here about drainage and grading. So as part of the permit submittal application, a topographic survey showing existing and proposed grading stamped and sealed by a professional engineer is submitted and required by the Engineering Department. For any proposed home addition, construction of a new home, or the addition of impermeable areas such as patios, driveways, sidewalks, et cetera, the Engineering Department reviews the existing and proposed drainage changes on the, on the parcel, whether the parcels locate, locate along the lake or not. So we do that just as a, as a standard for all permits. For properties wishing to discharge stormwater to the lake, detention is not required if the engineering can demonstrate that in the entirety of the lot, 100%, is captured and discharged to the lake without causing any adverse effect to the neighboring properties. Proposed stormwater discharges to the lake must be taken to the toe of the bluff in a controlled manner to prevent the erosion of the slope. This is primarily typically done in a single storm sewer pipe, which is designed to take the proposed capacity and flow. Water must be captured on the table land and is not allowed to sheet flow over the top of the bluff as it would cause severe erosion. Appropriate erosion control is needed throughout construction and permanent erosion control must be installed as needed during, during the time and afterwards. A separate erosion control plan must be submitted for review to ensure that, that best management practices are being taken to ensure that the site meets NPDES permitting required. Those are IPA requirements that the village must adhere to. Excuse me. So staff also reviews plans to ensure that all floodplain requirements are being met. As you can see on the slide, on the slide here, the floodplain base flood elevation, also referred to as the BFE, varies along the lakefront on the existing topography, based on its existing topography along the shoreline. FEMA last updated this floodplain map in 2021. And so there, I know there was a question about how does the elevations change? And in this specific case, what you can see is it's not specific to one parcel itself, but a few along the way. And it's all based on the modifications of the shoreline. So as you can see, on the top left, it, it varies from 588 to 587 to 591, then it goes back down to 587. So this is all part of the study that FEMA does. So that's how that variation happens throughout. And again, it's all based on, on the, the topography of that shoreline. It's important to note that in Weneka, considering the height of the bluff, primarily all proposed structures are, on the table land, on the bluff, are outside the limits of the floodplain. And that is because we are, are so high up in towns now, in places like Willmett and in Evanston, which I'll talk here a little bit about below, they're basically level so the floodplain limits can change. However, for proposed, for any proposed structures located near the base of, of the bluff or built into the bluff, they would be reviewed for compliance, if, that's, that's just a big if. This includes ensuring that any proposed structures in the limits of the floodplain, should they happen to fall within floodplain, are elevated to the flood protection elevation. And basically what that is, is that's the base flood, flood elevation plus two feet. This also applies to accessory structures within the floodplain that have to also meet zoning requirements. So now a little bit about some bluff requirements. So when staff reviews proposed plans to construct within the bluff of Lake Michigan, the Engineering Department will require a geotechnical and a structural engineering plan for all structures on, on or adjacent to the bluff. This plan must show the slope, will be stable, and reasonably safe from failure both during construction as well as at the completion of the project. So they need to certify that. So I'll just highlight quickly on this, we have some coordination with the, with the agencies that spoke here this evening. All proposed construction adjacent to the lake requires that the applicant apply for permits from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, the IPA, and the US Army Corps. For projects that are proposed that include table land improvements, including bluff and work extending into the lake, the Engineering Department would require that all federal, state, and MWD permits be applied for and approved prior to the village approving our, their application or the permit application. If a proposed project along the shoreline does not require an IDNR or an IPA or an Army Corps permit, but it is within the bluff, the Engineering Department does require a letter of determination from these agencies that no permit is required to the village prior to that permit being approved. For projects that are located from the toe of the bluff into the water of Lake Michigan, which you've heard that term quite a bit this, this evening, the village does not have a permit application procedure currently. These types of projects might include the installation of groynes, breakwaters, shoreline replenishment, reparions, you've heard some of these, these terms tonight, or other projects all considered regional permits types as project, as described by the US Army Corps. When the village receives notification of a project in the lake, the village will keep, currently, what will do is we will keep a copy of the permit in the, in the property file, as the village currently does not have a defined permitting process that extends past the toe of the bluff. If the project falls outside the current regulatory authority of the village and is classified as a regional permit according to the Army Corps or IDNR, the village relies on those agencies' experience and expertise for the approval of the permit. And you've heard from those folks tonight about the things that they look at as part of their review. So here's some of our MWD permitting requirements. So in addition to the Army Corps and IDNR, the village also works closely with representatives from MWRD. As part of the MWD's watershed management ordinance, a permit is required for projects along the lake following development activities, and this is a list of some of them. Two that I would just sort of point out here would be qualified storm sewer construction projects and construction of, construction or reconstruction of outfalls to the lake. These are, these are our primary ones. Although, although the village of Weneka is considered a certified community per MWRD, as a best practice, the Engineering Department requires, I'm sorry, excuse me, requires that an applicant must obtain a permit directly from MWRD or a letter of determination that no permit is required. The approved, the approved permit or the letter of determination is required to be submitted to the village prior to signing off and approving the permit. So I'll talk, touch base here a little bit about some water quality. So the village of Weneka is required to meet the requirements of the IPA National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That's a big, long word, but the acronym is NPDES program. This program regulates stormwater discharges from municipal storm sewer systems. The village is required to annually submit an update to the IPA for approval on steps being taken to meet the requirements of that program. The permit authorizes the village of Weneka to discharge stormwaters as defined in the requirements as stormwater, as noted here, stormwater runoff, snowmelt runoff, and surface runoff and drainage to waters of the US. This includes the Skokie River and in our case tonight here, Lake Michigan. As required, as part of these requirements, the village is required to develop a stormwater management plan that includes best management practices and measurable goals. All communities with separate stormwater sisters, systems, that means a separate sanitary system and a separate stormwater system, within the state of Illinois are required to develop similar programs and report annually on the status of the goals that you've listed to help improve. The village is permitted as part of its permit to allow direct discharges to the waters of the US as long as the proposed improvements meet the goals and requirements of the NPDES permit. As SORON noted, they don't regulate the direct discharge from overland residential properties and things like that. To date, water quality sampling by the village is not a requirement from the IPA for these types of discharges. So a little bit, kind of following on David's community comparisons, this, this list shows a list of communities that Engineering Department reached out to to better understand their current permitting requirements and procedures for properties along the lake. As you can see from this side, slide, five communities with ravines and bluffs developed and adopted a steep slope ordinance, as David noted. The city of Highland Park has adopted a steep slope ordinance as well as the creation of a lakefront overlay zone. In speaking with these agencies, specifically those that have a steep slope ordinance whose regulations end at the toe of the bluff, staff was informed that they all rely on the experience and expertise of the US Army Corps and IDNR when approving those water projects. So similar projects, they rely on Army Corps and IDNR. Although Highland Park does have the authority to review projects in the lake based on their overlay zone, they too rely on the expertise of IDNR and the US Army Corps for permit approvals. Highland Park did note to staff that, that if there is an especially involved project in the lake, something above and beyond a typical groin or a breakwater, Highland Park does reserve the right to use an outside consultant to perform a detailed review on behalf of the village. Staff indicated that this happens rarely and in the most recent times couldn't provide us an example of one more recently that they, that they went down that avenue. Two communities, Willmett and Evanston, don't have steep slope ordinances, as, as David indicated, as their beaches are primarily level with the private properties and they don't have ravines in their communities. Staff didn't, did confirm that they regulate their lakefront properties primarily through their floodplain regulations, which is why they have not adopted steep slope ordinance. So as a, as a follow-up here about some other studies that were done, stuff is, staff has been asked if, if the effects of the development along the lake are tracked or studied over time by the village. The village does not study these effects, but there are larger organizations that are looking at and studying the evolution of the lake over time, I think SORON and Steve also mentioned a few of those. If you'd like to explore these resources further, the IDNR is the, is, is the primary source for Lake Michigan data. The IDNR has a coastal management program. As a matter of fact, Steve Saunders, my predecessor, actually participated in, in providing some feedback to one of those studies that's listed here. The IDNR has a coastal management program that has committed its resources to studying the lake and promoting its well, health and well-being. This research work is also in partnership with the IPA, NOAA, and the US Army Corps. A link to the, a few of those programs are listed here, but there's a lot more detail on their website if you want. These studies are used primarily to research and then make recommendations. So to add a little context to this, they're not used to, to set laws or guidelines, but they use it to evaluate and then provide recommendations to the IPA on either a federal or state agency level. So they do do that over time and then they accumulate the information. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Jim.
I'll go the other way. Quick question, Jim.
Can't go clockwise, that's my turn.
I may, I may have not understood this correctly, but you, you mentioned that the village of Weneka does not have an obligation to test the water quality of outfall into the lake? Is that?
The IPA does not require the village, as part of our NPDES permit, to, to test the water quality coming onto the lake. IPA does periodically perform their own testing on that, but we are not required to.
Okay, so we do not do that?
That is correct.
Okay, do, do other communities?
Not that I am aware of.
Not, not that you're aware of?
Yeah, there's, there's not a mandate from the state to do that.
Okay, so there's no mandate, whether that's right or wrong, I can't say, but we don't do it?
We do not do it.
Okay. Fair enough.
But we do get to pay for lead pipes being replaced.
We apparently do.
Yes, we do. Good. Others?
Sure, real quick. I know that testing that trustee Durborn just asked about, part of our stormwater project are going out to the west.
All of it.
Right, but we're testing that because we're trying to improve that to make sure that the outflow is better than it is now, right?
We're, we're testing it because it's a requirement of the Cook County Forest Preserve.
Okay.
And it was one of the conditions of the IGA with them to capture the first flush and essentially the first half inch of rainfall. And that's why the structures are upstream.
And not using that tar sealer that hurts the environment and all that kind of stuff. Okay, good. I go back to my base flood elevation. How is it possible that, I know the Army Corps tests the numbers on its own map?
Right, FEMA.
FEMA, or sorry, FEMA, sorry, FEMA. You know, you could have a property that your neighbor is six feet higher base flood elevation than your lot.
Correct.
How does that work in real life numbers? I just don't get that.
So if you can imagine, the shoreline changes over time. So if you were able to stand in the lake and look, and look landward, you would see that the elevation goes up and down, although it, it's, so it's the effects of flooding on the land and not so much the level of the water. So that's how they, they set it based on a bunch of studies and engineering calculations I won't bore you with, but that's how it varies over time. So they perform studies of the effects of the water on the landward side, and that's all based on the topography.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Thanks for a thorough explanation of this. I guess one of the thoughts I had was, and it's more of a comment than a question, was it sounds like everybody was relying on the US Army Corps to issue individual permits up until three years ago, and then that would have triggered a public comment period and for, for structures in the lake.
Regional, for regional permits.
Well, now it's a regional permit.
Right.
But prior to that, it was an individual permit that required public comment, they had to take into consideration on an individualized basis, public accommodation. So I somewhat feel like there's been a regulatory shift in the last three years where it sounds like all the lakeshore communities all treated these projects the same. They weren't reviewing in-water projects because US Army Corps was. Now the Army Corps has gone to a streamlined approach through a regional general permit, and now everybody, it's, so it's like a gap that I think we're all kind of waking up to, for a lack of a better term. I mean, I understand all the administrative efficiencies, especially when those lake, those lake levels were high and people were very worried about losing structures, but now we're left with this kind of regulatory gap where everybody, it sounds like, was, doesn't, you know, review those projects either. So it's kind of really helpful to understand that, how we got to this point, I think. And that it's important for us to think about this in this changing, you know, environment where the feds and the state are really looking at it, except on an ex, you know, for the benefit of people, these regional permits or general permits are more expedited, right? And they don't have as much, you know, individual review. The other thing that came to mind was, because we have been talking about total daily loads in terms of stormwater quality and the Clean Water Act, you know, it used to be very focused on the large polluters, now we're getting to the dairy farms and all these other things. Is there any discussion with the MWRD to think about, not for the existing structures that, you know, historical outfalls into Lake Michigan, but is there any discussion about trying to, for new projects, direct that stormwater out of the lake?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, there's only, there's only few places, at least in Northeastern Illinois, for the water to go to. Lake Michigan is the most obvious one, and, and before they did some of the tunnel projects, there was a lot of discussions about directing water directly to the lake. Because there's such a seven, sensitivity to maintaining the purity of the lake as, as best you can, those direct discharges, even for MWRD, when they went to do their deep tunnel, they, they tried to do the same thing. It's the amount of water quality that would be required to purify the water before you release into it far exceeds the dollar cost to it. So in most cases, that maintaining it on land, there's, there's no place to put it at to store it.
Well, I guess the question is that we're requiring it, we're not allowing it to flow, sheet flow, surface flow into Lake Michigan. We're requiring it to be detained at the top, but we're not, those are just detention facilities, or just.
Not, not, no, 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 there's no detention required for parcels along the lake. It has to be collected.
Right, okay, sorry.
Controlled, yeah. But you can't sheet, if you, if you.
Right, so we're putting it into a cistern in the yard.
Just a pipe.
Or a pipe, okay.
Just a pipe.
And there's no filter or anything?
There's no requirement to filter that water now. So to, to maybe put in a little bit of context, when you think of the village's stormwater system right now, we collect certain components, let's just use the east side as an example because we're talking about the lake. Residential neighbors are collecting into the, into the storm sewer, then it goes to a direct outfall. And we have numerous outfalls that go directly to the lake. In this specific case, it, by directly discharging to the lake in a controlled manner, it reduces the impacts, and I kind of outlined this in my memo a little bit. It directly reduces the impacts to the storm sewer system, allowing for more capacity, which allows the water to get away from the homes faster.
Yeah.
So you don't have on-street flooding. And by adding it in, it goes to the process of picking up things along the way before it goes out to the lake, versus when you're on a property and it's. versus when you're on a property and it's just sheet throwing over grass or a sump line of groundwater and then going straight out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
But to follow that line of thought, there's no testing to see what's going on there. We've seen in our own sewer systems, other things being pumped into our stormwater. A lot, enough. Not a lot. Enough to make it a problem. So the question is, we'll never know if it's direct. We have no idea, because we never test it. We never test the water.
Yeah, we're not required to.
Okay, all right. Thanks, I appreciate it also, very good work.
No, thank you.
I guess, T, you hit the nail on the head about the gap that concerns me over the last several years. When the IDNR kind of said, hey, we're in the business of approving permits, and I think probably for the most part, ninety-five out of a hundred times, that's probably fine. But things have changed and there are five times, just like home preservation, ninety-five homes can be torn down, there's five that probably shouldn't be. But those are things that just kind of made the hair on the back of my neck stand up a little bit. And as he walked out the door, there's, IDNR was saying, yeah, it'd be great, we can't do all, you know, our staff is our staff and we can do what we can do. So otherwise, I thought, a lot of questions, but I think you covered it very well.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you, good job.
No questions, and thank you.
Thank you.
And none for me, so thank you very much, Jim, good presentation, we really appreciate it. Okay, well, now we're to the time of the evening where our guests get to come up and share their thoughts with us. And just some general requests for the public comment period. I said earlier, and I'll just remind everybody, please help us achieve our goals. We want to, tonight, what we're trying to determine as a group up here is how much authority, additional authority, we want to exercise over lakefront properties. We're not interested in debating about all the other things that have been in the public dialogue these days. We'll get to those at some point, I think, but tonight isn't that night. Tonight is just helping council understand whether this is something that we want to do as a community or something we don't want to do as a community. So I'd love to hear from everybody, so we'll start the public comment period, open up the microphones, and we'll start in the front row. Chuck, you want to start it up? Yeah, and I would like you to keep your comments to a responsible length, I'm not going to be... Wow, that's pretty cool.
I'm Chuck Doughty, I live at nine sixty-eight Elm Street. I too would like to add my thanks to the village council for assembling tonight's presentations. It represents an important and insightful first step on trying to sort out these issues with regard to beach access. Some of you in the audience have this, this is through the council. I've got four slides I'd like to talk about in this packet. The first one is meant to sort of remind ourselves that one of the reasons we're here tonight is that some seventeen hundred Winnetkins signed a petition against walling off Winnetka's public beaches that deny access and views to public lands along the beach. So there is considerable interest in this topic. Among the many reasons why is that almost all of Winnetkins, as shown on this slide, are within a thirty-minute walking distance of the beach and I think expect to enjoy their historic access to the beach and its wonderful environment. Recent IDNR and Army Corps of Engineers permit applications in their response have brought to light the need to pay more attention to these beach developments. And that's why we're here tonight. On the back of that page is another slide I'd like to address, and that is that before two thousand and two, Winnetka beaches were basically flat, as you can see on the top part of this slide. And it was possible to walk along the beaches without interdiction. The steel sheet pile groins shown, one of which is shown by the arrow, then provided a stable horizontal platform at about an elevation five eighty-three along the beaches. And on the bottom part of that slide is shown what the beach looks like now in two thousand twenty-one. And you can see that numerous six-foot-high or more boulder walls have been erected and now prevent walking along the beach. So a good deal has happened since two thousand. The second page begins with slide three. And the beach pocket design shown at the top here in detail with armored stone breakwaters was advanced and accepted by IDNR as a means for bluff protection, which seems not an unreasonable thing to do. According to IDNR guidelines, permities were supposed to provide stairway public access to these pocket beaches built on accreted public beach. Many permities did not provide this access, and IDNR has been unable to enforce this provision. The photo on the left, in case you're interested in what this looks like, is a person standing in front of a six-foot-high boulder wall. I'm going to skip slides four and five to kind of move on to the fact that I'd like to close with an example of something better than a pocket beach stone wall. And that is shown on the top and bottom left of slide number six. And they illustrate the advantages of this relatively flat elevation five eighty-three template provided by sheet pile groins that have been in existence in Winnetka since before nineteen thirty-eight, as I found in evidence of air photos were taken then. If one wishes to protect the bluff, that can also be done with that flat beach presentation by protecting the bluff itself. You don't need large piles of rocks in order to protect the bluff. You can protect the bluff as is shown on the top of this slide by the sheet pile wall along one of the bluffs in Winnetka that was built after the nineteen eighty-five high-water mark and withstood the twenty-twenty high-water mark quite admirably. And this beach did not require large boulder breakwaters in order to be stable. And I'd like to now thank you by allowing me to describe why we find ourselves at this inflection point. Thank you very much, and I'll leave room for everybody else.
We'll go second row. Christina? Moving down the line, anybody? No? Just a lot of listeners. We're over on this side now. Leo, you want to come on up?
My name is Leo Birov, and I do develop, but obviously, from Highland Park to Canaveral's in the lake. I feel to involve right now steep slope regulation in Winnetka would be not a good idea, except maybe property above one thousand number. Reason for Highland Park, lake forest, and bluff, Canaveral's went on a couple of years ago by mistake, my assumption. Because that, when you hire a go in bluff, it's much more dangerous. You need to protect your bluff from development, and it's much more fragile. And Winnetka bluff pretty strong, and if you do proper engineering, which you did a couple of projects with, well, boat house, stuff like this, you pretty well protect neighbors from some kind of destruction property. It's number one. That's why I feel goes steep slope regulation going depreciate very hardly for property lake owners who still not develop, and value will go pretty far down. Like in Glen, because I don't have protection zone. But you cannot do even stairs pretty well go to the lake, except five-square-foot area in some areas, stairs. It does create a lot of issue how you even get to the lake. Okay, that's why be careful when you try to affect value of people like, people who even pay hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to enjoy a lake. Property value extremely high, and property can plunge in value if you try to do Canaveral's only one village, which was similar bluff a bit lower. And it was one person in Canaveral's who did it and did steep slope regulation. Like, if you have shallow property, you can even do poles thirty-five feet. Means you can even build houses, and property can, well, you can plunge right her down. It's number one assessment, I feel, just be careful with steep slope regulation. And as far as protect your bluff, I feel it's property owner's rights to protect because erosion was so high in twenty-twenty when water went on. Obviously, you got permit which pretty strange and give you a lot of permitting. I don't feel really should be involved what to do with your beach, stuff like this. And it's always was from edge of the water your property. And it changed obviously with lake and what you do if you add the beach. But all permitting was always, because you got front lot, was always from edges of water. I don't know how you're going to define different way. It's a proper way to do it, I feel, property. But you should be very careful how you're going to affect property value of people who live in the lake in Winnetka. I just need to be careful, okay?
Sure. Thanks, Leo. Second row, come on up.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jenna Radney. I love selling real estate in Winnetka. It is a true treasure. I love what I do, and I am blessed to represent a lot of people sitting in this room for all kinds of houses. I think the one thing that needs to be really emphasized when we think about lake and lake value is the homeowners that live in these houses in Winnetka love where they live. They take care of their property, not even from a bluff or a beach perspective, but from the front of the house perspective with all their perimeter fencing, with all their beautiful perennials. So I think it's important to look at this component of luxury real estate and understand there's a lot more to a lakefront property besides the lake. This is what we treasure, this is what the value is about. I can sell anything on the lake, but the most valuable lakefront property up to lake bluff is in Winnetka. So if you're going to do a report and understand value and understand slope and understand bluff and understand beach problems, then we need to take a closer look at what the value is with the Winnetka properties. Because I will tell you this, if you're looking at analysis over the last twenty-four months, price per square foot, not based on lot size, is all in Winnetka. So I say that when we start playing with this outlier effect, yes, we are the outlier, and we should be thankful that we are. The minute we are like Highland Park, the minute our property that's at ten million will be at four-point-five million. And I know that for a fact because I sell those too. So I want to just advise everyone to be careful about what we're talking about because I think once the lake value goes down, it's going to go to the rest of the value in the whole entire village. The other last thing I'm going to say too is, I think that the people who are on the hundred-and-two lots in Winnetka should have their own type of group to talk about this as a subcommittee, who understand the lot, who are paying the taxes, who are paying the maintenance. Where's their voice? Because they're the ones that live it every day. So that would be one suggestion that I would like to see, that those people who actually live in those houses get the right to have a subcommittee to tackle these same issues. So thank you for your time, I think it was a lovely presentation. I don't understand, it seems like everyone kind of had the same theme, that this happened very quick. Everyone put this together very fast. I saw real estate, I knew nothing about this meeting until last night. So I'm glad that I'm here representing the people of Winnetka and other houses besides just lake houses. But I think the value in Winnetka starts with the lake, and let's keep it that way.
Thanks, John. Okay, this is where I get... Come on up.
Yeah, I'm Steve Yusaw, I'll be real quick. It's actually questions. We all have a right for advocacy and things. And first of all, I would say, I appreciate all the work to get us to this point so we can have an informed conversation, and the nature of its openness, I appreciate as well. So thank you very much for your preparation to make that the case tonight. But I have four simple questions, really, I'm not going to advocate for anything. It's just part of being informed about the decisions that you're contemplating. The first question is, is there anything that was presented or in your studies that you've seen to date that provides a legal or a case law precedent for the provision of private land to be required to be given access to people who don't own that land? That's the question.
We won't be answering any questions from the podium, but continue.
Okay, the second question would be, as we go through this process, I'm assuming we're also going to be looking at the substantive repairian rights of the people who own this property, not only the land rights to restore their bluff in the case of a sudden damage. Because restoring in your bluff in the case of sudden damage is not restorative, that's not accretive. That's a right that you have as a repairian right in this state to do so. And that land does belong to the individuals when it's sudden. Thirdly, are you considering the impact that if you're going to impose the back of the lot now as the front of the lot, the impact of the restrictions that you already have on the front of these lots on Sheridan Road for all these properties? And the substantial additional restrictions that exist for these homeowners now on both sides of their lot that don't exist in others? And when you determine access, I would ask you to think about, if you want to walk in my backyard, you know, I have one of these lots, can you at least clean up after yourself? Everybody wants access, but nobody wants to take care of the property. Everybody talks about all the right to take care of it. But then you would not believe what I could show you on my cameras in the back of that property in terms of the abuse of, the lack of care for, some of the people who are actually purporting access to these properties. And when you go through this process of making this determination, I think you need to consider all those perspectives. The value piece, I've seen this happen in California, and as Jenna said, it's going to happen here. You risk a substantive change in the value of the property of the entire village. You want to walk through my backyard, but I'm guessing if I come walk through your backyard, you know, with a fence in it, you're probably going to call somebody, you know? So there's nothing in any law that provides for the provision of public access to private land that is not accretive beyond the Steelwater Shoreline, nothing. And there's nothing that gives a right for the village to provide that. There's nothing given in the law in the state that allows or requires either the Army Corps of Engineers or IDOT to require that as part of a permitting process because it's not allowed, it's not required by provision of law. That's an interpretive decision. So I ask you, consider all those factors when you consider how you go forward at this point. And hopefully get a point that we can come to a resolution that works for all the residents and doesn't really require serious concerted action on the people who have these rights and aren't going to be willing to give them up. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving across this way, anybody across the aisle there wants to, want to step up? I'm sorry, I get really, really, so now we're going to go back another row. I should probably just make people sign a piece of paper saying they want to talk, then I could call their names out. Come on up. Old traditions die hard.
Okay. My name is John Root, I live on three twenty-six Woodland Avenue. And I'd like to thank all of the village council again for studying this issue and village staff for looking into this issue. And, you know, the impression that I get from this, first, I'll commend Peter Friedman for his excellent piece of legal work there. You have the jurisdiction to do this, the question is, should you do it? And, you know, I think you need to study it, look at it before you make a move to either, you know, have a temporary standstill on these developments, but also to go ahead and poll the community. How does the community feel about this? Much like D thirty-six, when they were looking at the improvements that they wanted to do on the schools, just to find out where the community stands on this. And I think hiring, again, an engineer, coastal engineer, to go ahead and aid you with this, looking at how you should frame these ordinances if you're going to go ahead and do this. And I would even do this before, you know, approaching or doing a survey within the community. And then if you have a lot of controversy, put it out for ordinance. And those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Colleen, you want to say anything? Okay, we'll jump over. Anybody on the other side there? Lori? No? Anybody? Okay, we'll get to the side of the room in a minute, Warren, don't worry about it. Ted, three minutes, please.
Hi, Ted Winachenko. So I think these comments are germane. I would have spoken earlier if I had heard all the limitations. But first, I'd like to comment that I don't believe the village has a hands-off approach to property development, at least not where I live. When I tried developing a house... I tried developing a house, the restrictions were specific, unyielding, and I would say poorly considered. So that's a suggestion that perhaps we need to do more on the lake. But the real question is, is really what, what should we do? I think we should do something. I would disagree that this idea that the one case that established that the right, the line of conveyance is the same as the public trust is, is the same. I think what comments we've heard today suggest and show, the reason we're looking at 100-year-old case law is because the people that have money and the people that care about this are the people that live on the lake. And they have a vested interest in making that as positive for themselves as they can. And so no one argues this because no one that has the ability to argue it wants it changed. But there is precedent, and there is this rec case law in Illinois that says the ordinary high watermark is the limit of the public trust land held. So the village wants a safe answer, and the safe answer is not that. The safe answer is to side with the other side. But I would suggest perhaps, maybe as the village is doing this, that the village consider taking a stand and moving the state forward and redefining property along the lake, in my opinion. Let me see, I'm changing what I was going to say here, so I'm not really reading. Okay. But I have to admit that I was shocked to learn that the village hasn't really overseen anything for the last 30 years. And I think it's clear, looking at the structures, that that has been a problem. I think that the discussion today from the IDNR and U.S. Corps of Engineers shows that they really don't consider a lot of things. They have a very specific mandate. They're not considering a lot of the other things. And perhaps it's time that the village stepped in to do some of that. You know, and these, these problems really do go back. I mean, there was a, recently, the Corps, the Corps was held liable for 30% of the losses to private owners along the other side of Lake Michigan, going back 70 years because of a jetty they built. Arguably, what went on in Waukegan caused the same things here. Maybe some of the owners should consider suing them if they want to assert their property rights. But, but I think the village really needs to step up and represent all of its citizens. Right now, the village is aware that there are encroachments into the public right-of-ways at Spruce, Elm, Oak, their cherry, the Cherry Gate was locked today. Why? It was a beautiful day. Anyone should have been able to go out to the city-owned beach at that, at that street end. But the village has taken a stand where people that live on the tree seats will fight those people if they decide to put up a planter in the right-of-way. But the flagpoles, the signs saying private property in the street and Elm Street, those, we'll just let those slide. We don't really have to worry about it. But I do think it's time for reconsideration of all this. And I really do think the village should move forward. I think you guys should issue, like, next week, you guys should issue a moratorium. Say, we're going to reconsider this. We're going to start thinking about regulations so that we have on the books that we're thinking about this as the legal document said, and, you know, move forward. And that's, you know, really, I think I'm glad that we're doing this. I'm glad that you're thinking about it. I'm just hoping that it's really something substantive and not just a lot of talking. And in terms of public access to private land, there is case law in New Jersey about that.
Ted, we're not going to debate with other people in the room. Thank you. Next, please.
I don't have a problem.
Okay, guys, that, that's enough. Moving around, Irene, anybody back that way want to talk? Last row? No, no, no. Warren, you want to come up and say something related to what we're talking about tonight?
Good evening. My name is Warren James. I'm the, I'm a commissioner of your Winnetka Park District. I'm the current president. I also had the opportunity to be the co-chair of the Lakefront Master Plan. I have been studying this since, well, I've been studying the lake for a lot longer, but this issue in the Lakefront Master Plan since 2014. Much of what we heard tonight from the Army Corps of Engineers, IDNR, and Jim Burnall and others is, is a review session. And it's a very condensed review session. There is, there are many, many other facets of this that should be studied further to get a full understanding. I do want to invite everyone to the January 21 workshop, open house, held by the Winnetka Park District. It will be at the community house. And we will have a lot more time, a lot more information with various stations, be able to present aspects of the Lakefront Master Plan. The Lakefront Master Plan is the official policy of the Winnetka Park District. Now, touching on tonight, I want to point a few things or highlight a few things. Litoral drift, I don't know if it was ever defined. That is the movement of sand along the lake shore. Litoral means near shore. So sand in Lake Michigan moves north to south, west to east, west to east. That's where you get the Warren Dunes, the Indian Dunes, Sleeping Bear Dunes. All the sand gets pushed away. We live in a sand-starved environment on the North Shore. We do so because of the natural movement of the sand from west to east, but we also do so because of the improvements that were made at Waukegan Harbor and Great Lakes Naval Training Center. The Army Corps of Engineers estimates 225,000 cubic yards of sand crosses over the state line every year. Only 15,000 or 6% of that makes it past Great Lakes Naval Training Center. Therefore, we have had to fortify, harden, we heard 85% of the Lake Michigan shorefront is improved. It's protected against further erosion because we live in this sand-starved environment. Lakefront protection is necessary. We also heard that stone is better than steel. Steel reflects wave energy. Stone dissipates it. Steel, those steel jetties that were commonplace for so many years, they create fall hazards, a vertical difference. You've seen it happen. It can change with one storm. You could have a three-foot or a four-foot drop-off on one side of the steel to the other. Stone is better than steel for dissipating wave energy. Normal waterline, we heard that terminology, that's defined as the calm waters edge. So private property right in Illinois, as Peter said, extends out to the calm waters edge. Ergo, if you want to walk the lake, you're supposed to have your feet wet. But there are vagaries, as Peter also said. It has yet to be tested in court, whether accreted sand, you know, what, what that all means. We also heard that we would have had one mile less land area if the erosion occurred. Back in 2020, Lloyd Beach was under severe distress. We had 100-year-old trees falling into the lake. That is Mother Nature. So unless we improve and protect the beaches, we will see further erosion. We have to deal with varying lake levels. You heard that. We went from all-time low in January of 2013 to eight months of all-time high in 2020. That timeframe, that seven-year period to go to all-time low to high is unprecedented. The plans that have to, that lakefront property owners, including the park district, have to address is these varying lake levels. I can promise you one thing, the water level's going to change. I have no idea which way. But the plans that we implement should adjust and accommodate those. Finally, the Winnetka Park District is all about providing greater public access. So please come join us on the 21st, learn more, and thank you for giving me this time to speak tonight.
Thanks, Warren. Anybody else? Come on up.
Hi, Bob Zabres, 321 Willow. Thanks for putting this together. As usual, great factual basis and work by everybody. Three things. One, factually, we've heard some statements about the fact there aren't stairs along the lake. I saw that in some of the park district material. It was misstated. If you actually walk, walk it, instead of doing some engineering work, you will see a number of steps along the lake between properties. I know my neighbors are putting some in. Everybody in my area certainly has those. So I just make that for the record, that I think those things are, are there if one would explore it. But in the bigger picture, there are two things I'm surprised by. One, if you held this hearing anywhere in the country, certainly California or New Jersey, resilience is the issue, climate change. If we held this meeting 18 months ago, we'd have had several homeowners here whose backyards were falling in the lake. Fortunately, not ours. But I know neighbors who were losing their land. So that was a pressing concern 18 months ago. Just because the convenience of the current water level, it seems like we're having a conversation. And I'm not sure about what. I keep on hearing we're going to move forward. I don't even know the purpose of this. To do what? To solve what? And so it seems like there are a number of different issues here, but I don't really see what that is. So that's one point. My last point is, I'm a little surprised and haven't been in Winnetka for 25 years. We keep on relying on what other neighboring communities are doing. If you really want to be held to that standard, hold that standard to everything. And I don't think we want that. So I'm just surprised to see that in the dialogue at all. So I, I think there are plenty of good conversations to have ahead of us, but let's not ignore climate change and let's not, you know, fall back on the convenience of what our neighbors are doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Great comment.
So my name's Bill Jackson. Rob, good to see you. So I didn't even know about this until a few minutes before it started. Got an email saying, holy moly, you need to be here. I'm actually kind of taken back a little bit. I live on the lake, 771 Sheridan Road. We did a groin with Shabika and Company. The reason we did it is I would have lost my boathouse, okay? No big deal, but I didn't have a boat anyway, but I do now. And it, it just seems crazy to me. I put a ton of money into the lake so we'd have a beach. Chuck actually came by our house and said he needed a walkway. We accommodated. We made sure that happened. You know, it works. We don't need more laws. I, I think it works today. It works fine. I don't know what the slope thing is. I can just tell you, I don't get it. I, I think, who cares? So if someone builds something on the close, our house kind of reaches over the slope. If that was the case today, we would have torn down several trees. We built around a tree that was planted before Lincoln, you know? So yeah, change the slope, I ripped the tree down. If that, if that's where we're headed, I don't get it. I'm against kind of, I, I think it works. We had to have seven, I think, permits. Is that right? So now we're going to need eight? Seriously? I, I think it works. So if there's something that really doesn't work, I'd like to hear it. I didn't hear a problem. Just because Highland Park does it? Thank God we don't do it. There's nothing in Highland Park I want. I like Winnetka. So, yeah, so let's keep it the way it is. And thank you for all the insight and information.
Thank you. All right. Would anybody else like to speak this evening?
Good evening. Martin Sinclair, attorney for Rob Schreeshheim. I'll keep it brief. I appreciate the time. And I'm on topic, I promise. I just wanted to speak up to the public trust doctrine. I appreciated Mr. Friedman's memo very much. And like everyone else, I appreciate that it's public. The memo states that it's unclear, quote, "whether a property owner may claim title to artificially created accretion caused by a prior owner of the property." These are the vagaries that Warren referred to. First, the public trust doctrine and the public's land, the right in that public land, may only be preserved if an accretion caused by a prior owner of a property remains public upon the sale of that property. Under an alternate interpretation, an owner could build a groin to increase their property, then sell it with both parties to the deal, having the full expectation that the subsequent owner would get the benefit. The builder of the breakwater, the groin who has the enlarged property, would ultimately, and understandably, demand compensation for that increased property size. And they would have, essentially have a practical, effective benefit to that accretion. Practically, this would promote the gradual privatization of the lakebed solely by the action of private parties, eating away at the rights of the public in public land. There's no express case on this issue. I have looked, I promise. And I know that your excellent esteemed counsel has looked as well, because it's the only reasonable interpretation of the doctrine. And second, when the Illinois Legislature has spoken on the issue of rights to lakebed following a property transfer, it has expressly stated that title reverts to the state of Illinois. The Illinois Park District Act allows park districts to take title to the lakebed for the public benefit expressly. But when that land ceases to be used for public purposes, title shall revest in the state of Illinois, together with all the improvements thereon and the appurtenances thereof. It's 70 ILCS 1205 slash 11 dash 2. But the point is just that default upon transfer is that ownership of the land reverts to the public. It is the public's land, and the action of a private party cannot privatize that land. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody left in the room? Okay, come on up.
Good evening. I'm Susie Schreiber. I was a past Winnetka Park District Commissioner during the high waters of 1987, and have worked on Lake Michigan issues since then. And I just want to add two more bits of information and data base to the excellent presentations and much needed for the general public that Winnetka provided this evening. And just thank you to everybody that put it together. And I did thank the presenters. I would just like to add that the Lake Michigan watershed draft plan is currently being finalized. And according to the IEP A representative here this evening, will be available very shortly in its finalized format. But Lake County and Cook County are the only two counties with Lake Michigan shoreline. And a lot of our watersheds begin to the north, and we are the recipients to the south. So Lake County Stormwater Management received the federal grant to do the Lake Michigan watershed plan. And watershed plans are encouraged. I don't know if they're required, but I know they're highly encouraged. So entities such as yourself can have a document and data to reference on which to make decisions. But it will be available, and you can address Lake County Stormwater Management, who, and Mike Priscilla was the lead on the grant. So I would suggest that you add that document to your website. And then, just for a clarification, which was referenced, Illinois Coastal Zone Management came into being in approximately November of 2011. Prior to that, Winnetka, Park District and Village declined to become a coastal zone state. But on the third try, we did, those people that supported it, Illinois became a coastal zone state, and they get all of their direction and funding generally from NOAA. So that's just a bit of information. And then I guess there's one last thing that I wanted to note, that Lake County does test their, certainly for E. coli and their shoreline communities on a regular basis. And Mark Pfister is the executive director, and you could reference them for any information. But with, you know, I think you did an excellent job this evening. So hats off to everyone.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else left? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we will close the public comment period. We'll bring it up to here. I've got a proposal to make to my colleagues. It's 10 after 10. We've, we've received a lot of information, including the public comment. My head is spinning trying to kind of categorize it all. And my head spins a lot, anyway. I think it might be more productive for us to come back to the table and continue this discussion with our thoughts on whether we want to do anything. I mean, that's really what the conversation about this is, is, is do we want to add any layers to lakefront protection and lakefront permitting? And to what extent? And I think that's, that's the primary conversation. I would propose that we try to sneak in, Rob, don't, don't smack me on this, but, you know, we have two weeks off after our, after our third meeting this month. And maybe we could squeeze something in on the 31st? You know, I mean, it's another study session.
Yeah, there are five Tuesdays.
Yeah, there's five Tuesdays this month. So maybe we could squeeze something in on the 31st and pick it up fundamentally right where we've left off here and actually get some time to mull over this information. I don't think there's any good, I do not believe there's ever anything good that gets decided after 10 o'clock in a public meeting that's been going on for three hours. And if you all do- And if you all disagree and want to keep grinding through it, then that's your call. So, you know, my preference would be to come back fresh and...
I just had, you know, I organize my work travel around, but I'll try and make it work.
Yeah, I'm good for the 31st.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, we obviously can poll, we'll have to notice it, right, Rob?
Sure.
If that's okay. And, you know, really pick it up then. I, I just don't see that we're going to get anything productive done with the rest of the evening. And I'm really in a lot of pain, so I want to get out of here.
So Chris, would that be, would that be a meeting that would just start and end at this table?
Yeah.
Or would it be, again, public comment?
No, 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 no. We will, we will, it will basically be, okay, yeah, there'll be more public comment.
Okay, but no more presentation.
No, no, no. It's just a continuation of this meeting postponed to the 31st, unless you want to stick around.
I'm tired.
Okay. All right, with, with some consent on that issue, we will just close up the meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.